There are no amendments?
I don't have any cards. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to the Camarillo Library Board on an item that's not on the agenda?
I see no one forward. We'll move to the conference.
I'll move the approval. Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Well, I can't see myx, but I'm guessing it passed unanimously.
Green agreement.
Okay. No departmental items. Comments from staff?
I just had a quick comment. For those viewers who normally tune in at 5:00 PM, we did start this evening at 4:30, and that's why we did not salute the flag this evening. I just wanted to mention that. Well, we saluted the flag earlier at 4:30.
That's because we saluted the flag at 4:30, and we have three or four meetings, and we only do it at the first one.
Right.
And then again at 7:30.
Thank you for clarifying my clarification.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolf has a couple of comments, if you'd like.
Okay. She sits in such a place, I can't even see that she's there.
No, I just saw the very top of your head. Thank you. I just wanted to let everyone know that the summer edition of the newsletter is out. It has been delivered to every home in Camarillo, and it covers three months, June, July, August, our busiest months in the library because the students are off school, and we have a lot of things going on. So please take an opportunity to look at it, and if anybody didn't receive one at home, they're welcome to come to the library or the City Hall to pick up a copy.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
These are great. I mean, this really lets you know what's going through the libraries. A lot of things happening in our library that didn't happen before, and now we've got a lot of things going on, and I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Well, we had a budget session out there last week, and while we were there waiting for the budget discussion to start, Barbara introduced me to the state librarian who was in town visiting, and he had a meeting, I think, in Santa Barbara, but had to come down and see our library. He'd heard so much about it, so...
Good.
He was blown away with it, you know?
Yes.
Wants to build all of them like this.
And he'll be back for a more official visit.
Good. Comments from trustees? I still have a hard time calling us trustees. No comments? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
I'd like to call the regular Camarillo Sanitary District meeting to order and let the record reflect that all the directors are present. Amendments to this agenda?
No amendments.
Public comments for the Camarillo San? Move down to item three as to consent calendar?
Move the approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. Okay, legal counsel, any comments from the staff tonight?
I don't have any talk.
No comments from staff? Any comments from the board members tonight? Hearing none, we're adjourned.
I'd call the meeting of the Camarillo City Council to order. Let the record show that all members are present. Are there any amendments to this agenda?
Have no amendments.
Okay. We do have a presentation, which with some regret, we have to go ahead and do this because we're losing a very fine public servant.
Yep.
And I'd like to ask Doug Tapkin to come forward and join me up here at the mic. Doug is finishing, what, 20 years?
20 years.
20 years as the executive director of the area housing authority, and has done a very outstanding job during those period of time. I recall when I came here, the housing authority was somewhat in disarray.
Mm-hmm.
I don't remember that one. And he's taken it, and I also, you know, he gets judged by a lot of things in your career, and one of the things I always got judged by, or others get judged by, is who they select for jobs. And I happen to be fortunate to sit on the interview panel when we selected Doug as the director, so he's made me look good. So it's with great pleasure that I give a certificate of recognition to Douglas Tapkin, and I'll just read part of it. "The Camarillo City Council extends gratitude to you for your dedication to the communities of Ventura County as executive director of the area housing authority of the county Ventura. Your outstanding leadership is reflected in the HAA numerous achievements during your tenure. Congratulations on your retirement." Doug?
I'm gonna miss you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Would I say a few words? Just a little quickly.
Thank you so much for your recognition. It's been a marvelous time working together. I've had a chance to work with every member of this city council, both individually and corporately. As you indicated, we've made lots of changes. We've grown. There are some really wonderful things that we have done. The new director will be Michael Nye. He will begin July the 6th. I retire the 4th of July, so we are looking forward to that. And for your information, Michael is a resident of the city of Camarillo.
Good.
He will serve you well. He's been here for a long time, and I look forward to continuing to serve in some capacity and working with the city as we move down the road. Thank you so much for your time. Yes, sir?
Comments?
What's strange is that when, before his time, we had a little problem, like you say, it was in disarray, with housing authority, and I think a couple of us that were there at that time said, "We're not gonna deal with him anymore." Then Doug came along, and you asked him questions, and he answered the right way. And we said, "Well, let's try him out again." And so it worked, it's worked out since, so it's great.
Kevin?
Yeah, you know, we're all, not only professional, but personal friends of Doug, and I have to thank you for putting together these difficult projects. The one that comes to mind is the Caillou-Sambro and Ponderosa one, which I didn't think we were gonna be able to put that together. And people don't even know that it's the affordable unit of the housing there. It's done very, very well. And, you know, that's kind of what public and, you know, private partnerships can do, and that, to put together these projects, that's great. And I thought with your stewardship and your staff there, I think that you did it. And that's just one of them. But you added a lot of credibility, Doug. We're gonna miss you. I know from a personal point of view, you've always been straightforward, and I really appreciated your guidance on, not only with the authority, but in general. So enjoy your retirement. Hopefully, you won't be too much of a stranger, and we'll be seeing you. Yeah.
Charlotte?
Yes, I know I can't vote on anything that has to do with the housing authority, but we're not gonna vote on this, so I know I'm sure I can talk about it. But I believe that the statements that the housing authority was in a state of disarray when you came is a real understatement. The housing authority could not issue checks. Landlords were getting checks, sometimes five months in arrears, from a government agency, and that's why we were looking at pulling out. They just couldn't function. And when you came in, I made an appointment to talk to you, not as a public official, but as a landlord, because I wanted to know what your plans were, to see if you were planning to continue that way, and you said absolutely not. And you did turn it around, and you turned it around in a very, I was really surprised at how quickly things turned around. You did a great job, and you've continued to do a good job. Thank you.
Jan?
I'll just echo the thank yous. You've been a pleasure to work with all these years, and you've always shown an absolute desire to make Camarillo a better place, and we appreciate you. Even though you don't live here, we'll always welcome you to Camarillo because you've always had our best interest at heart as well. So thank you so much, and have a great retirement.
We've never held it against you that you didn't move.
That's right.
Congratulations, and we look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. I look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
Return to the minutes. We have the approval of the minutes.
About the consent calendar?
Oh, excuse me, it's the consent calendar.
Bill, before we do that, can I ask just one question? Just have a question on this.
I got a question, too.
On Jay, it's the transfer of the cable television franchise with Verizon. Do we have any information on that? Is that a subsidiary of theirs that they're gonna do?
No, Frontier actually purchased a part of Verizon, and so we're getting the documents in order for that to happen.
But it's not cable television.
No.
Looked to me like it was their telephone system.
Yeah, I don't...
I understand that Frontier is buying all of Verizon, and Verizon will be leaving the state of California.
Actually, I have the answer to this.
Very good.
What Verizon is doing is it's planning to transfer its local wireline business serving California to Frontier Communications, so Verizon Wireless will still be Verizon Wireless, but this is for their cable service.
So Verizon will still have the wireless, or...
Yes.
Okay. And they're transferring to Frontier the rest of it, or...
Yes, their cable functions.
Those normal packages, we include everything. They're gonna divide that up now, I guess.
How are they gonna do that? Okay.
And in terms of the corporate, the corporate structure that's explained in their submittals to us, they were gonna create a corporate structure. It's referenced in the third paragraph of the agenda report that they're gonna create an entity called Newco West Holdings, and then they were going to, it's all a corporate structure thing, and then they were going to insert Newco into the ownership chain and then transfer the ownership interests of Verizon to Newco. So that's how the corporation structure is going to work. They did provide a substantial amount of materials, which I reviewed and worked with Mr. Campbell on this, and it's basically our understanding that they're gonna continue to use their same personnel and same level of service. So this isn't expected to impact services, and also they'll continue to be required to pay the city's franchise fee. So there's no impact there.
So are they going to require everybody, force everybody to change out of Verizon.net and into something else again?
I'm not sure if they're gonna be changing that or not. I mean, that would...
Every time somebody buys somebody else, we've been forced to change.
Yeah. I don't have the answer to that question. I could, we can get the answer for you. But basically, they're just asking for our city's consent to the transfer, and under your franchise agreement, you are allowed to make your decision on whether you're gonna consent, and that consent cannot be unreasonably withheld. So unless there's some reason not to agree to it, then the default would be that's agreed to. And based on my review of the materials, I didn't see any basis to object.
So this is just cable, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Wireline, not wireless, waterline.
Well, it'll be phone, too.
It'll be phone, wouldn't it?
Yes. Anything with a wire.
Wire-phone, not the wireless.
Landlines.
Landlines, yeah, okay.
Any other questions before we... I have a question on number D, and it's just seemed like we've continued this original contract for a number of times. I assume we compare that to what the market is out there for tree services?
There is that, but also we've been in this transition period where the state DIR, Director of Industrial Relations, has changed the prevailing wage for tree trimmers, and it went up significantly, and there was some pushback from cities and communities in California that that was a little excessive, and so they've reviewed that, and it looks like they are gonna make an adjustment again. We just need to kind of be in a holding pattern here for that final number to land and to then go back and determine what the impact and cost is to our contracts before we're ready to go forward with a new contract.
Okay, thank you. All right, there's been a motion.
Was there?
No, is there a motion?
I'll move the approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is any further discussion? Please vote. Motion is approved, five to nothing. We'll move on to city council, request for funding St. John's Pleasant Valley Hospital Catheterization Lab. I got a request to have that matter sent to the city council for review and for discussion. I understand by the policy that it's basically to be referred to a scheduled council meeting. I would assume it would be the one on the 24th. We also do have someone here from the St. John's Hospital, or actually, St. John's Hospital Regional, and so is it all right to ask her to come up and talk a minute? Why don't we, we'll have Debbie Klein come up, please. State your name for the record, please.
I'm Debbie Klein. I'm vice president of philanthropy for the St. John's Healthcare Foundation, which covers both regional and Pleasant Valley, and it's my pleasure today to address you. St. John's is proud to embark on a construction project for the future, our new patient addition for St. John's Pleasant Valley Hospital. Highlights of the new patient addition include the following features: 50 private patient rooms, state-of-the-art surgical theaters, orthopedic operating room, central sterile pharmacy dining area, lobby and gift shop, and a very, very special feature, which is our cath lab. Recently, the St. John's Healthcare Foundation submitted a proposal to the city of Camarillo for support of the cath lab in the new patient addition. Included in that proposal was a budget for funding six pieces of equipment. At this time, I'm respectfully submitting the entire list of equipment needed to outfit the cath lab, and I gave copies for your review. As you will note, the budget is over $2 million and includes a myriad of high-tech instruments and equipment. We hope you will review this list and take this enhanced proposal under consideration. As well, please note that the campaign to fund the new patient addition, part of the Circle of Dignity campaign, is a five-year timeframe. In essence, pledges can be made over a period of five years. For further clarification, a catheterization lab consists of diagnostic equipment that is used to visualize the arteries and chambers of the heart to treat heart disease. Common procedures that are performed in a cath lab are angiography, balloon catheters, stents, permanent or temporary pacemakers, implementations of rotoblastion of calcified vessels. In the past, conventional surgery was the only option. This was invasive and required an extensive recovery time. The new procedure enables physicians to obtain 3D images without the distortion of conventional X-ray techniques. Other benefits include minimization and more throughput for the hospital. It also makes it possible to combine diagnosis and treatment in a single procedure. Bottom line is, this cath lab will save lives. The resources and procedures that will take place in the cath labs will make a major difference for the citizens of the city of Camarillo, and we hope you will consider our proposal. Thank you.
Any questions? Yes.
Did I hear right that it can be paid over a five-year period?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes, the campaign is a five-year campaign.
Any questions?
Your Honor, this is one of the things that's most important in the city of Camarillo. If you have a problem that requires some of the treatments, and you go to the emergency room, you will be transported to Oxnard by ambulance rather than treated there. And I think, to me, this is something that's gonna benefit the whole city.
This is the prime feature of this whole entire new patient addition.
So you can do treatment here and save a trip, or at least to save a race-for-life trip to St. John's, so we're at Oxnard.
And we will be able to diagnose everything in the cath lab, so...
May I ask one question?
Yes.
What is the total amount that the foundation is required to raise?
For the entire new patient addition, $10 million.
Ooh, okay.
Dignity Health is supporting this with over $70 million, and we are well on our way. We have made a major dent in that $10 million.
Very good.
Okay. Well, if there's no objection, we'll set this for the next...
Can I make a comment before we leave this one? I noticed that we originally got the letter for 100, request for 100,000. I don't quite know where that number came from, but now that we've had the, we have the complete list, I would request that we look at some of the perhaps larger items, and I don't know if you put our name on it, but it would be pretty neat to have bought the heart pump, to think that the city of Camarillo is keeping people's hearts going. To me, those big, nice, one big piece of equipment would be rather exciting, rather than buy, you know, funding a bunch of little stuff that you've kind of hidden in the whole room, so to speak. So I would request that when staff looks at this, that you look at that. The other one that caught my eye was the ultrasound. I think those are two large pieces of equipment that really, to me, are kind of the heart of the whole thing, and so that would be my request, as we look at what to fund and how to do it.
I think that's a very good idea.
Your Honor.
Yes, Charlotte?
I just, I've been to so many trainings where they've talked about it that I think, I don't object to putting it, excuse me, putting it on the next agenda, but I think we need to have our city attorney talk to us about whether, in his opinion, this is a gift of public funds or not.
I was gonna make that comment, that I do think that we do need to do that research on the public purpose, because that's what the rules require in terms of expenditure of city money, so I can do that research. And then the other item I was gonna research is the prevailing wage issue, and to what extent prevailing wages may or may not be part of the process. If it's buying equipment, then it's not construction, so it may not be, but I do want to look into that a little further.
If you recall, when they built the emergency room, I believe the city was a part, we made a donation to that. So maybe that's part of your research as well, is to bring us back what we did. I can't specify how many years ago that was now.
Yes. One of the things to look at, and why you saw the 100,000, is that all the equipment here is in that cath lab, where it's mostly, all the, the other things you're seeing on the other page are, but these are very important pieces of equipment for the cath lab.
No, but this whole page is the cath lab.
I know, but these are the most important ones, the machines that take pictures of your, I've been through this, I know.
So have I.
Yeah.
Let me ask the question.
That's the most important stuff, right there.
Let me ask the question, the equipment that you came up with to get to the 100,000, was that just to get to the 100,000, or were they the most important, or...
I think that X-ray stuff is vitally important.
I'll be honest, everything on that list is very, very important. It all works together to create the cath lab, and that's what OSHPOD has determined, so it's vitally important. I also wanted to mention that the funds for the purchase of equipment come from a separate fund from construction. It is a separate fund.
Let's bring it back.
Okay, we'll be bringing this back for discussion on the...
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, sure.
Just kind of quickly, I think we need to give staff a little direction here, because what I'm hearing is we're picking and choosing what is most important and what's not, so maybe staff, do you have enough clear direction here of what we're talking about, what we're doing here?
What might help, and I'm assuming that we have enough time to do the research that Mr. Perry mentioned, to get it back the next meeting, what might help, we've got the budget the same evening, is if you do give us a sort of a range of what you're looking at in terms of contribution, if the legal shows that we can do this.
I think the 100,000 is fine, and I don't know, you know, if you're giving small parts of a cath lab that's going to cost $2 million, they're not gonna put our name on a heart pump. The people who are laying there, I mean, I've laid there, and I've seen the inside of my heart through, in a different hospital, with this same type of equipment, you're not looking at who donated it. I think being part of the whole thing is fine, but I don't, I don't know that it matters which particular ones we are sponsoring.
Quite frankly, I will tell you why I picked those, is because they were, they are more than 100,000, and I think out of a $2 million lab, I think the city of Camarillo could donate more than 100,000, so that's what drew my eyes to the heart pump being 115 for one piece of equipment. I suppose you can divvy it up any way you wanted, but I would like to see staff look at a number greater than 100,000, and particularly if we're looking over five years, and I guess you give us a five-year plan as well, would be something that would be useful as we make our decision.
Yeah, that's fine. I was looking at something, somewhere in the area between 100 and 150,000 is what I was looking at.
And I was looking at 100 to 200,000, over five years, period.
So you just give staff some direction of where we're going, anyhow.
I think there's consensus that should be a range up to about 200,000.
Okay.
All right.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
You had indicated that the funding for the equipment is separate from the funding for the construction. Is there some paperwork that documents what you just said?
We can make sure you have it.
If you could forward that to us, we'd appreciate it, just send it to Mr. Fang or whoever.
This way it doesn't affect your construction costs. Good.
Okay, okay, is there, and, okay, is there a motion to refer this to the city council?
So moved.
On 24th. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion's carried.
Your Honor, this is not something unusual. When it affects the whole community, we did senior center, we paid for that building. We did, after much research...
That was a public agency.
As much research as Charlotte and I, we built the, most of the skateboard park. So when it affects all the community and is beneficial to the community, this is nothing unusual.
I agree. All right, we'll move on. We go down to new business. Okay, city manager?
I don't have anything, but I think we are ready to go to study session around 5:30, and perhaps this might be a good time to break.
All right, we can do that.
Okay.
Is there any objection? We'll adjourn this meeting and go to study session and return at 7:30.
I think you meant recess the meeting.
Councilmember Craven?
Here.
Councilmember Kildie?
Here.
Councilmember McDonald?
Here.
Vice Mayor Morgan?
Here.
Mayor Little?
Here. Councilmember Craven, could you lead us in the flag salute?
Certainly. Please rise, place your hand over your heart, and join me in the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, are there any amendments to this agenda?
There are no amendments.
Okay, the first item of business is...
Where's Jane?
A recognition of a public servant that's made a lot of difference in the city of Camarillo over the time she's been here, and I'm going to ask her to come up. She's retiring, to our regret. Jane Rosansky, would you come up from the Camarillo Healthcare District?
There she is.
My great pleasure with some regret that we're saying goodbye to Jane. Jane has served what, 20 years? 22 years?
Wow.
As the head of the Camarillo Healthcare District, which has provided, has grown from a remnant of the hospital district that was formed to build the hospital back in the '70s, I believe it was, and has evolved into a health organization that has done a terrific job for many, many people in this community, particularly the elderly and the affirmed, and that they have come up with programs for a lot of people who would never get out of their houses, frankly, unless they had a program to go to. And Jane has been responsible for all that, so it's, well, we, yeah, we provide, we help, we help, it's her, it's her programs. We have a certificate of resignation, resignation.
I did that.
Excuse me, to Jane Rosansky, chief executive officer of the Camarillo Healthcare District. And let me just read a part of it, says, "The Camarillo City Council extends its gratitude to you for your dedication to the Camarillo community as chief executive officer to the Camarillo Healthcare District. Your outstanding leadership is reflected in the district's numerous achievements during your tenure. Congratulations on your retirement, signed by all members of the..." Congratulations on your retirement, signed by all members of the city council. So, there you are.
When I received a call from Jeffrey or email.
It's not on.
Speak into it, right into it then. Okay. When I received the phone call to be here, that the city council wanted to give me a presentation, I was really, really touched by it. I know most of you way past two decades and work together for the healthcare district and also personally doing it, and, and the city is in very good hands, and the Camerio Healthcare District with Kara Ralston as the new CEO will also. My job at the healthcare district was so satisfying to do and to work with the city and others and other partnerships to build what it is today, but it's time to go. I have finished what I set out to do, and it's time for me to pass the reins to someone else. I thank you so much to the community too, for the support that you've given the district, especially to each and every one of you whom I hold in high esteem, and to, of course, Mayor Little, and we go way, way back as Rotarians, I think way back then. So thank you. I am deeply, deeply honored by your kindness, and may you continue to serve the community as you do.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
First of all, before we leave this, I want to acknowledge Tom Rosansky out there. Stand up, Tom. Charlotte, you want to say?
Yes, Jane, we raised our kids together, and at one point we said we knew each other 100 years, but I don't think either one of us is 100 years old, because we're the same age.
Charlotte just had a birthday. Charlotte's birthday this month, so we're the same age now.
Actually, it's today.
And Jane's birthday's on St. Patrick's Day.
100% Irish, born on St. Patrick's Day.
But what I was going to say is, I've watched your career ever since we did things in AAUW together, but you started shining when you took over the healthcare district. They certainly made a wonderful choice. I knew you were a good leader, but this is going to sound a lot what I, like what I said just earlier when we said goodbye to Doug Tapking of the Housing Authority, and, but the healthcare district was in a tremendous state of disarray because of the previous administrator. She had a way of making it so that no other government agency wanted to work with her. And you came in having a tremendous job because of the attitudes that have been developed for the previous, I don't know, it was two, three, four years. It was a short time, but it didn't take long to develop a lot of problems, and you very quickly solved those problems and set about to take a very small district and look at what it is today. You have the senior care center, you have, you took over the meals program, you, I think they had one or two vans when you took over, and look at the fleet now. I mean, at every step of the way, the healthcare district has taken a leadership role since you've been there, and it isn't at all what it was when you started. You've done a tremendous job, and you have built it into a role model for healthcare districts all over the state. So, thank you for a job well done, and I hope you have a wonderful retirement.
Thank you, my friend.
Yeah, Jane, you're a very kind and a compassionate person, and I think that goes a long way to the success that you've had with that healthcare agency. You've been very kind to my family and, and of course, me and the citizens of Camerio here, and we couldn't ask for a better director. You took that to heights that 20 years ago, I think, nobody really knew, and you've done a great job, and your husband, Tom, has been with you the whole way, and your staff down there. You know, it takes, it takes a lot of, a lot of hands to do what you've done, and I know you're gonna have a great retirement, but I just want to thank you again from the bottom of my heart for all that you've done, and you've left it in really good hands.
I do thank you, and I have a fantastic staff, unbelievable. I have a great board of directors and almost has. And so, but I will continue with the California Commission on Aging. Governor Brown did appoint me, and so I have about four years to go on that, and that's watching out for over 6 million older adults. We don't say the word senior, because that's an us and them type of thing, but it's older adults, and so I'll be watching out for Camerio, Ventura County, and the whole state. It'll be fun. Thank you, Kevin.
That's what you call me, then.
You're older adults.
Thank you.
We were fortunate, years ago when we became a city, people voted to have a healthcare district here in the city of Camerio. That was a very fortunate thing that we did, because your agency gives so much service to the community. And of course, I agree with the things Charlotte said about the earlier ones and, and how well you're doing now and all that, because we're there with you and we see it. And so we're gonna, Kara's gonna be a good person to take your shoes, though, and by the way, fellow Rotarian, and also Kara is a fellow Rotarian too. By the way, Rotary folks really give to the community. That's what they do. They give to the community and they, they service the community. And so, I congratulate you and wish you well.
I thank you, Mike, I really, truly do.
Well, after all of that, there's not much left to say, except to say thank you so much. You have served the community so well, always with a sense of class but a humor at the same time, and, and truly a joy to work with, and you have served our community so well, you have so much to be proud of. And obviously, the governor saw that in you as well, so all, so now you gotta go serve him instead of us, but that's a whole nother subject. But we, we thank you, we wish you well, we take time to enjoy your retirement, don't work too hard, and we will see you around. You're not leaving town.
No, that's true. I am not leaving town, you will see me around, but thank you all from the bottom of my heart. This just means so much to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I get my two cents in too. There are people in every community that make a big difference, and you're looking at one of them right here tonight. So thank you again, Jane, for everything you do.
That's so sweet.
Okay, we have some, is there any public comments? No public comments. Jeff Malgren. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Malgren. I reside in Camerio Springs.
Jeff, can you speak into that microphone a little closer, because it's hard to hear you.
Sure.
A little better.
Okay. My name's Jeff Malgren, I live in the Camerio Springs, one of the Camerio Springs developments, and I'm here to talk about the Longo public nuisance situation. First, I wanted to commend the city attorney and the city manager for a very well-specific and well-stated letter to the Longo property owners. It's been six months now since there's, the letter has gone out in December of 2014, and there hasn't been any published progress report made to the affected residents concerning any follow-up action taken by the landowners to resolve the, the issue of the public nuisance. At this point, I believe there should have been a comprehensive course of action planned submitted to the city of Camerio by the Longo property owners to mitigate the condition deemed a public nuisance. The improvements in place coordinated by the city at the direction of the NRCS have yet to be tested by severe inclement weather. They are not considered to be a fail-safe, long-term solution. Follow-up recommendations from geologic consultants include additional costly improvements to the terrain situated upon the Longo property. A hearing of the cost of additional abatement efforts by the city needs to be held, and with just four months left until the commencement of the projected rainy season, no further delays should occur. The subsequent nuisance abatement lien and spatial assessment procedures should be applied if the hearing does not produce a comprehensive plan of action deemed acceptable collectively by the city manager, city attorney, and city council. And I believe the option of progressing to judicial remedies should remain open as a means of enforcing all or any provisions of this nuisance abatement process. Lastly, the Camerio Springs residents do not want a repeat of this disaster, and I believe until the nuisance has been abated, the emergency declaration should remain active as it substantiates the perilous condition still remaining with the Longo property terrain. Any questions or comments of me?
Other than, there will be some comments and discussions at, at another agenda item later tonight, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I should mention that this is gonna be an agenda item, so it is departmental item 19A, and I'm not sure if the public is aware that the public comment here in this section of the agenda is for items that are not on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have another one. Stuart Krieger.
Is this not on the agenda? It's not on the agenda. Is this not on the agenda? He should be speaking till later. If he is.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Stuart Krieger. I reside at 6220 Getana Avenue in Camerio Springs. I'm here to urge you not to terminate.
We're gonna be talking about that later. I, I have here, you want me to talk about mandatory water conservation?
Okay, well, then I'd like to ask the council why, or if, the, the passage and the approval of hundreds of new dwellings is their answer to water conservation and where the water's gonna come from?
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, there, there is reason for that, but we can, we'll, we will be taking that up at a later date, probably the end of the month, that whole question of that.
Okay. Thank you. We've put that off for an agenda item for, for the end of this month, to look at what we can do.
Thank you. And Matthew Lorimer.
Good evening, city council. Matt Lorimer, Lamp lighter Mobile Home Park, 98 Camino Algarve, Camero. I came here May 26th. Let me read the letter again. Dear city council, the rent review board commission has been around for 30 years under the guidance of the Camerio city council. During the years, the current, currently, the Camerio city council has supported the commission's work as a way to allow parties to come to a fair and decision process. On April 24, 2015, a rent review hearing was held regarding a 5% increase at the Lamp Lighter Camero Mobile Home Park. Matt Lorimer in Sandy Lane, basically, that's me, the recommendation, May 6, 2015, from the rent review board commission called for only a 1.7% increase. This was due to the maintenance issue, along with current health, safety issues, along with the lack of communication with the HOA and residents. This was the reason for the decision. The Camerio city council, which supports the rent review commission, important work, should write a letter to the owner of IPG and support the findings and ask the owner to follow the decision of the rent review commission findings, May 6, 2015. The Camerio city council has written a letter in support of the issue regarding the issues. You know, I talked about this May 26th, and now I'm talking about it again, because I haven't had a response, but you look at the audience tonight, and they've been waiting six months, so I wonder if it's gonna take me six months to get there. You know, people live in this community, and I think they need to be responded to. You know, my issue is, as I brought this up to you two weeks ago, no phone call, no letter, no email. Again, there's people in this audience too. You know, you see retired people here, and they look to a local government for solutions. This is not the federal government. There's no reason to drag things along in life. You can get things done. Set a priority and get it done. You, in front of you have the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, you know, they, they basically took the LA one, which was 1.7, and Ventura County's 1.4. So I could've, I don't think they should've got an increase, but they did. You told me, and you told the citizens, over 500, that we should go to the rent review board. You backed it. You said this is the process, you didn't want rent stabilization. Okay, folks, we did what you wanted, and now it's time for you to support your residents and your rent review board. Stand up, write the letter in support of what the rent review board said, 1.7. We're not asking you for your personal opinion, we're asking you to basically state what the rent review board said. Again, I would appreciate to have some follow-through on this. Thank you very much for your time, and happy birthday, Charlotte.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney, I believe that the rent review board decisions are voluntary, accepted.
Yes, that is right, Your Honor. We do have a rent review process in the Camerio municipal code. It's in chapter 10.50, and as the council will recall, I have made two presentations to the council with respect to the rent review ordinance and the previous request for rent stabilization, and I'm not gonna obviously repeat everything I said during those presentations tonight, but I will mention that I, this afternoon, had an opportunity to review the docket for the rent review proceedings, and I found that it has been in operation for 30 years, that there have been some 39 proceedings that have gone before the rent review board, and some of them dealt with various different issues, but of the ones dealing with the rent, there were eight compromise decisions that were made where the, the rent increase was allowed in part and denied in part. So eight compromises, there were eight times where the park owner prevailed, and there were eight times when the homeowner or apartment tenant prevailed. So this is a very balanced program. It is a voluntary program, and it is one that the rent review commission, those commissioners are appointed, and they serve as the decision-makers with respect to what recommendation they're going to make, and it is a voluntary process. That is what we have in Camerio, and that was the direction by the council. So the council does not have the legal authority to force a solution. You do have the authority to make the decision to have a voluntary process, and you've made that decision, and it's, in my opinion, operated very well over the last 30 years. The fact that the result here was not accepted by the park owner is, that was their decision. They had the prerogative to do that, just as tenants can make their decisions as to what they're gonna do with the process. But we have a process, and this is a process that we've recommended that the city continue.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have any further cards on public comments, so we'll move to the agenda to, well, we're gonna be getting on to items on the agenda now. First, we have a series of public hearings. The first one is a resolution ordering levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2015, 16, for the Camerio Landscape Maintenance District Zones 1 through 10. Mr. Fox, I believe.
Yes, Your Honor, members of the council. This is an item we review annually in order to continue levying assessments for the nine zones that make up our landscape maintenance district. Each year, we have to have a public hearing and consider whether we want to continue those assessments. There is included in your packet an engineer's report that was prepared that identifies what's needed to continue the landscape maintenance in, in the specified areas. Again, that's a final report that's included in your packet. This is something we go through every year, so I won't go into a lot of detail on the, the report and the zones. I know you're familiar with those, but I will draw your attention. Included in your packet is table one, which summarizes the nine zones, the current assessment, and then what the proposed assessment would be if you approve going forward. In most of the zones, the assessment would stay the same. There are three zones where we are recommending a change. The two zones, nine and 10, are next to each other, and those are ones that have a annual index to keep up with inflation that goes up about 3%. So each of those zones will go up between $7 and $9 a year. So each of those zones will go up between $7 and $9 a year in assessment. The other zone is Zone 4, and that is the Mission Oaks Industrial Area. That is a zone that has had a maximum assessment that we could have charged over the years of $380 a year. However, because we've been able to keep up with the maintenance costs at a lower assessment, we have been only charging $260 a year. However, we are now at the point where we are dipping in, below the reserve level for that zone, and we need to catch up on the reserve policy. As costs have gone up, we now need to increase the cost there, so that is recommended increase to $300 a year for that zone. Again, the other zones would remain the same. If you do want to proceed with continuing with the assessments, there is a resolution in your packet that would call for the county then to levy the zones over the next, levy the assessments over the next tax year. Staff is recommending that we continue with this in order to be able to pay for the landscape maintenance in those areas.
Okay, yes. Jan McDonald.
Thank you. Are the other zones that do not have an increase, they do not have an inflation factor built into them, so they can't increase?
There's somewhat of a mix. That's true for a number of them. There are some others that they don't need an increase. We are keeping up with the cost in those zones and the reserve policies in order, so, for example, they may have more units, and we're able to just keep up with the amount that's being recommended. Now, there is one zone, and that is Zone 6, where it, that's the one area where we're not meeting our reserve policy at this point, but we also don't have the ability to increase the fee because there's not an inflator. The others, we would not need to raise the cost because we can cover the cost of maintenance plus meet the reserve goal.
So the cost in some zones are higher than in other zones? Why did some increase and some didn't? I guess that's what I'm after.
In some areas, we've, well, I'll use Zones 9 and 10 as an example. That's an area where our costs have never been able to keep up with the fees. That was an area, for example, we had to cut back some of the landscape quality and then eventually add some additional units in just to even try and keep up with the maintenance costs. So I guess a simpler way to say it is, most of the zones, we're able to keep up with the costs. There's four that that is not the case. Three of them, fortunately, we have the ability to at least raise to try and catch up. One of them, we never will. And in that case, we're starting to cut back on the landscape quality. We can only afford to maintain with what money's available.
So in 9 and 10, then, it was raised by the amount of that index?
Correct. Correct. And those are, we're just barely keeping up with meeting the reserve policy there. So we, the other zones actually had accumulated a pretty large reserve over the years before we realized that there was a need to start bringing down that reserve because we were way over the policy. So there's been an excess that we've had to draw from on probably more than half of the zones.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay.
Your Honor, I move that we adopt a resolution. I'm sorry.
Public hearing.
Yeah, the public hearing. Is there anyone? I don't have any cards to be heard. Anyone out here wish to be heard on this question of the assessments? Not? We'll close the public hearing.
Now, it's time to make the motion to adopt a resolution ordering the levy and collection of the assessments for the Camrio Landscape Maintenance District Zone 1 through 10, as shown in the engineer's report.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion? Not, please vote. Motion carries five to nothing. Move to Item B, Introduction of An Ordinance Amending Titles 19.44030, 19.44125, and Section 19.44150 of the Camrio Municipal Code, Off-Street Parking. Joe.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Little, and members of the city council. So for approximately a year and a half, we've been analyzing parking as it relates to multifamily ownership products, predominantly townhomes and condominiums. And we've been specifically looking at adequacy of the provision for appropriate guest parking and the resulting spillover of parking onto adjacent neighboring streets and impacting adjacent properties. The most recent parking ordinance update occurred on January 15 of this year, where the city council updated the parking requirements for new three-bedroom or fewer condominium or townhome units. And what that ordinance included was provisions that if the unit has a parking apron in front of the garage, as depicted on the slide, or a dedicated side stall, as depicted here, then it would require to provide two open guest spaces for every five units. However, if the unit does not have a parking apron in front of the garage or any dedicated side parking stalls, then the development would have to provide three open guest spaces for every five units. And so while this sufficiently addressed the inadequacy of guest parking for condominiums and townhomes that went up to three bedrooms in size, we recognize the need to address townhomes and condos that are four bedrooms or more. So as such, we held a study session with the city council on February 25, and we received direction to proceed with recommended changes to the planning commission. And we presented on April 7 of this year preliminary draft ordinance to the Planning Commission Ordinance Committee, who reviewed and supported the proposed amendments. And then ultimately, on May 19, we presented our updates to the planning commission, who reviewed our proposed tax amendments and unanimously recommended that the city council adopt what is proposed. And so we are proposing now for new parking development standards for four bedrooms or more, that units must have a two-car enclosed garage, as depicted here in the slide. They also must have a two-car parking apron, either in front of the garage here, like a driveway, or a two-car dedicated side parking stall here, on the side adjacent to the garage. And they would be required to provide three open guest parking spaces for every five units. We also are clarifying in our parking ordinance that bonus rooms, offices, and optional bedrooms would be classified as bedrooms for the overall parking calculation for bedroom count. Also, at the direction of the city council, based on the original study session, we've included a prohibition for tandem parking spaces that would apply both to enclosed tandem parking layouts as well as open parking in a tandem fashion. So this is just an example floor plan, and what it does is it shows the ground floor with a tandem garage, and then some central living space on the middle floor, and then the third story would have the bedrooms. And this would not be allowed with this proposed ordinance update. So I also want to point out that in the attachments that were provided, we offered the legislative format that shows the track changes of what is proposed. And on stamped pages 6 and 7 in that first attachment, you'll notice when we updated the size of parking spaces and we added the prohibition on tandem, there are existing standards C, D, and E. And in the draft ordinance for some reason that was omitted inadvertently, so on stamp page 15, it only has Items A and B, but we'll add Items C, D, and E into the ordinance for the second reading. And with that, we would request that you, we suggest that you request a reading of the title and that a motion be made to waive further reading and introduce the ordinance as proposed to you tonight. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions of staff?
I do, Your Honor.
Yes.
Just to make sure I have this right, the difference between a three-bedroom and a four-bedroom is that with the four-bedroom, you require two spaces in an apron or on the side.
Correct.
But the guest parking requirement is the same, so you're picking up one space?
We're actually adding an additional guest space also.
So with the three-bedroom, they only have to have two guest parking?
If they have a driveway apron, yes, they only have to have two guest parking.
Okay, so if it was, if they don't have the apron?
If they don't have an apron or a side dedicated parking stall, they have to provide three. And so when you go to a four-bedroom unit, you have to have a full two-car open driveway and three guest spaces for every five.
So we're actually picking up two spots, then?
Technically, yes.
Okay.
And the additional guest for the four-bedroom or more is consistent with other planning departments throughout the county. Something that's unique here to Camrio is the provision to require the driveway apron or dedicated side stall, and we feel that's appropriate for our community.
Well, you know how I feel about that.
That lets us, that really much, much more approachable than what we've had in the past. And now we can move along and have extra parking, so people aren't parking on the street and other things, curbs.
And Grandma can come to visit and not have to walk a mile to get to your house.
Any other questions of staff? If not, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone? I have no cards on anyone here, but does anyone wish to be heard on this matter of the parking? If not, we'll close the public hearing.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I moved to waive further reading and introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 19.44 of the Camrio Municipal Code pertaining to parking requirements for new residential multifamily ownership prop-
Second that with a comment, Your Honor.
Yes, go ahead.
I had, we've been studying this for months, and we all know that we need more parking in multiple units. And so we've come through to change our ordinance to make sure there is more parking and more convenience in our multiple units.
Okay, any other questions? Not, please vote.
Did you want me to read the title?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. This is ordinance number 1110, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Camrio, California, amending Section 19.44.030, Parking Residential Uses, Section 19.44.125, Camrio Commons Parking Requirements, and Section 19.44.150, Size of Parking Spaces of Chapter 19.44, Off-Street Parking of Title 19, Zoning of the Camrio Municipal Code.
Thank you. Please record the vote. Motion carried five to nothing. Is there a motion to waive further reading?
I thought that's what the motion was.
That's what the motion's part of.
Oh, okay. Thank you. We've got it done. All right, resolution, this third public hearing is a resolution approving tentative tract 5965, Ellicora Springville LLC. We have a staff report.
Thank you. Mrs. Lee will be presenting this item tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, honorable mayors, council members. The item that you have tonight is a request from Ellicora Springville for a single lot tentative tract map for the purpose of creating 99 condominium units. This is an application, or a companion application to RPD 193, which was approved by the Planning Commission on May 19. And the area highlighted in red is the location of this project, which is at the southwest corner of Ponderosa Drive and Spring Oak Road, and it is within the Springville specific plan area, and it is zoned RPD 18U. And the adjacent developments to the site include the Amley Apartments to the east across Spring Oak Road, and there's residential condominiums to the north across Ponderosa Drive. And future development includes, show you on this slide, include a five-acre park site just to the west and single-family development to the south.
So the park sites to the west of the site, not, okay, I thought it was next to Amley, but it's west of this site?
Correct. This project site is between Amley and the park site. And this is a view of the approved site plan that was approved by the Planning Commission. And the proposed tract map would allow for the developer to create a condominium map over the approved RPD to create for-sale condominium units. It proposes 99 condominium airspace units at a density of 17 units per acre, which is within the allowable density of 18 units per acre. And something that I wanted to also mention was that, as you know, the Springville specific plan has an inclusionary housing policy that requires developments to provide 20% of the total units to be affordable, with 10% being very low and 10% being low income. And based on the 99 residential units, this project will provide 20 affordable housing units as part of this project and on Lot 1, that is approved for 60 affordable units. The approved RPD also consists of 99 units with four to seven buildings, or four to seven units per building. And the development was approved with five different unit plans ranging in size from 1,158 to 1,788 square feet. And the floor plans have between two bedrooms, two and a half baths, two bedrooms, three and a half baths. And this slide shows you the approved design of the buildings that provide for Spanish and Monterey styles of architecture. And water, it's been a topic of concern, and I wanted to provide the council with additional information on how water availability has been evaluated and addressed for this project. So first, back in 2008, a final EIR for the Springville specific plan was certified that included an analysis of water supply. The water supply assessment complied with the state requirements for new developments over 500 units. The assessment uses the information contained in the city's urban water management plan to ensure that there is adequate water supply available for the proposed project's demand on a long-term basis, including during dry weather conditions. Next, more recently in 2012, the city council approved tract 5561, which has since recorded. The proposed condominium subdivision is within tract 5561. And as part of the approval process for tract 5561, the developer prepared a water availability study for that project area. And the study quantified the anticipated water demand for the various residential components of tract 5561 and found that the proposed development would use less water than the amount transferred to the city, so there would actually be a slight balance of water available to the rest of the community. This water availability study was approved by the city council in 2012 as part of the approval of tract 5561 and remains current for the project. On November 19, 2013, city staff issued a water availability letter for tract 5561, which serves as verification that the water is available for the tract. And then also with respect to the governor's executive order issued on April 1, which directed the state Water Resources Control Board to adopt water conservation regulations that would be applicable statewide, the city had already implemented water conservation measures since July of 2014, when the city declared a Stage 2 water supply alert. And these measures, which have been in effect for almost a year, provided for further water conservation measures, which are consistent with the water conservation measures under the governor's executive order. Staff, in coordination with the city's assistant city attorney, has examined the project as analyzed in the certified final EIR and finds that the final EIR remains adequate for the proposed project, as the approved water availability study had demonstrated that the project would not result in any new significant impact, and therefore, no additional environmental document would be required under SEQA. So with that, the Planning Commission at their May 19 meeting recommended that the city council approve tentative tract map 5955, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. And staff is available for questions.
Any questions of Jackie? Yes.
Just a couple. I want to make this clear so everybody knows, that the people that own that property, they own water rights to that property, that's what they farm with, their water that they wells. By giving those water rights to the city, we gain more water than they're going to use. And at the same time, we've got something coming up that might even make that less, I mean, more stringent next meeting that we have in the city council. So I think we've done a lot of good things about preserving our water and actually using less than we had been before.
Yes, Councilor McDonald.
I do have a question. Back in 2008, is that when the specific plan was adopted? What was this designated to be at that point in time?
The previous or the what was approved?
Well, go back, okay, now it sounds like we've got multiple ones. Go back to the beginning, what was it projected to be, and then what was it before this change?
it before this change? Work your way through.
The specific plan, when it was adopted in 2008, had designated this site for medium-density residential, which is the RPD 18U. And there's no change to that designation that's occurred since then.
Okay. So it is as it was originally presented?
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to get at. And then can you talk just a little bit about the parking issue? What we just adopted tonight, will that come into play with those four-bedroom units?
No, it won't. So the ordinance tonight that was presented to the city council is not effective. The parking that was approved with the residential plan development complied with the specific plan, the Springville specific plan, and it did comply with the most recent approvals by the city council for the guest parking.
Correct.
Now, you will have a park sitting right next to this, so there is additional, what, curb parking there across from the houses?
There is additional on-street parking on the streets adjacent to this development, yes.
Can you tell us a little bit about what the parking will be, though? I mean, do most of them have aprons? Do most of them have-
Yes. The majority of the properties do have aprons, as you could see on this existing site plan. All these gray shaded areas are full two-car driveways. And I believe there was only 17 units?
It's 21.
21 units out of the 99 that don't have a full driveway apron.
That's a start.
But they did provide adequate guest parking areas as well, as you see here on the site plan. So there's some large open guest parking in addition to all the driveway aprons.
Okay. Thank you.
Your Honor.
Thank you. Yes.
Just, we have a lot of people sitting here, and we adopted an ordinance tonight. Could maybe the city attorney or somebody explain the process, once you adopt it, then what happens, and then what's the timing before an ordinance becomes effective?
Yes, I'd be glad to. We had the first reading tonight, so at your next meeting on June 24th would be your second reading, assuming you agree to have the second reading at that point. And if you do, then the ordinance will become effective 30 days after the second reading.
Thank you.
May I ask one more question? A question I would think that would pop into people's mind is, is if we didn't approve this tonight, and it came back after we, our new adoption, could you do that?
That's a good question, but no, it's within a specific plan zoning district, and they have unique parameters and development standards specific to that area, hence the term "specific plan." And it does comply with those development standards as it relates to parking.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay. Thank you, Jackie. Well, this again is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. I have no cards to, for anyone to speak. Does anyone out there wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the council?
I'll move to adopt a resolution approving tentative tract 5955, subject to recommended conditions of approval.
I'll second the motion.
Moving in second, is there a discussion? If not, please vote. Motion carried four to one. Now we'll go to item number 19, Resolution A, Resolution Terminating the Emergency Proclamation, Camarillo Springs to Debris Flow. Who will give the report?
I'll, I'll be doing this, and then I believe Mr. Fox may have some comments as well. As the council knows, the city issued a proclamation of local emergency on November 1 of 2014 with regards to debris flow incident which occurred in the Camarillo Springs area. That emergency declaration, proclamation has been extended a number of times by the city council, most recently on May 13th of 2015. Government Code Section 8630 requires that the city council review the need for continuing the local emergency at least once every 30 days until the city council terminates the local emergency. Since the rainy season has officially ended, and because the city has now begun issuing building permits to the homeowners in Camarillo Springs to repair damages caused to their homes by the debris flow incidents, it's our recommendation that the city council terminate the emergency proclamation at this time. We believe it would be inconsistent for the city to be issuing building permits to allow property owners to be repairing their homes, and at the same time declaring that there is a continuing emergency in the area. So that is the recommendation with respect to the emergency proclamation. There have been a few building permits which have been issued, and we don't know at this time how many additional property owners may be seeking those building permits. I would also mention that in terms of next steps, it is the intention, it is our intention to be contacting the interested parties, including the various homeowners associations and adjacent property owners, to discuss next steps with regards to potential solutions to the issues which exist with the Camarillo Springs area. I've spoken with Jim Lingle, who's an attorney for one of those associations, who was kind enough to provide me with some additional information today with respect to the various homeowners associations. I know that one of those homeowners associations, well, we've had representatives from a number of them, present at the council, and I believe it was the last meeting we had one from the Mobile Home Park as well. So I've got contact information from them, so we'll be making that contact in the very near future. And I believe that Mr. Fox may have an update with respect to the NRCS.
Your Honor, yes, as this topic's been discussed in, at past meetings, questions have come up, there's been some confusion perhaps about hearing that the NRCS, and just to clarify, that's the Natural Resources Conservation Service, which is a federal service of the federal government. They're the agency that helped respond during the, right after the debris flow, to help fund the debris platforms that were implemented, and they actually prepared the plans for those platforms. That work is completed, and the funding for that has been exhausted. There was some question as to whether perhaps they would have access to additional funding to provide further improvements. Our understanding is that that's unlikely, that they're, we're kind of late in the fiscal year, and the funding has pretty well been depleted throughout the country because of other issues that they have been financed, and improvements across the country that have been financed. However, the NRCS does have an engineering staff that can survey and provide recommendations, and even provide some plans to help further reduce safety concerns. And they, I understand, have some engineers that will be in the area tomorrow. The city engineers will be meeting with them as well. Their primary purpose is to review the plan that they had originally prepared and the improvements, the K-Rail and other improvements that have been put in place, to see if there are any adjustments that make sense, and if so, they may modify their plans. One issue that our engineers will be directing them to look at and help, or I mean, guiding them to look at, is an issue that's been brought up here by some of the residents, and that is, there's a new drainage way starting to form between the more established historic drainage patterns up there, and that perhaps our engineers can look to see if there is a change in where the K-Rail's been located to help mitigate some of that. Maybe it can, maybe not, but we at least want their engineers to take a look at it and give us any recommendations. So we will be drawing, once again, on NRCS for assistance, maybe in updating the plans if there's any benefit that can be provided from that. However, if there is any change that has a cost associated with it, the NRCS would not pay for that, and we'd have to look to other sources to finance those changes.
Okay. Yes, Mike?
A question of our city attorney. Are the Stavens and, are Tom Staven and Longo's going to be invited to this, I call it Confab, better term, to see what they can do also to help mitigate this?
We're going to be reaching out to all parties.
Yes, Kevin.
Yeah. Brian, as far as the emergency proclamation, what's the timeframe of implementing that if we see at some point whatever happens in the future? Can we do that very quickly, fairly quickly as a city?
Yes, you can. As a matter of fact, your city manager, Mr. Feng, issued this proclamation, I believe, within hours of the events of October 31 and November 1. And that resolution was enacted very promptly, and then we brought it to the council at your first meeting, which I believe was November 5th. So the answer is, we can move very quickly if there's a need.
It's a follow-up question. In other words, the city manager has the authority to issue the proclamation, put in force all the required activities, and then the city council can subsequently adopt it? Is that how?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Is there any other questions of the city attorney or the city staff? Okay, we have a number of cards here tonight, and we'll start with, in the order they were received. First one is Jim Lingle.
Mayor Little, members of the city council, Mr. Feng, Mr. Pyrick, members of the staff, I want to thank you for allowing me to make these few comments. I will say that I had a, an outline of some things that I wanted to-
Jim, could you speak more closely?
Sure. I had a, an outline of a few things that I wanted to raise, but some of them have already been addressed during the public comments. You know, we actually have only about three months before rainy season is going to start September. That gives us very little time to do anything. Mr. Feng's letter to the Longo attorneys in December indicated that there was a finding of, of public nuisance, and that the city reserved the right to recover costs that were incurred. We are now sitting at, in the middle of June. We do not have an engineering plan. From what I understood from the comments that were just made, we may have some government engineers out there, but they're not going to draw plans. And I think that's the point I want to make. We need to get this thing moving. We've already, the city's already declared the Longo property to be a public nuisance. You've got a lot of authority. It's not going to do any good to have a confab, and I've spoken with Mr. Pyrick. It's not going to have any, do any good to have a confab unless there is some motivation. And here's my request. My request is that city, the city council direct the appropriate person, Mr. Feng, Mr. Pyrick, staff, to communicate with the Longo property owners and say, "Look, you haven't done anything in the past six months. Now we want you to come up with a specific plan." Your own report, your own geotech report, said that you needed a, an engineered report, an engineered design to show what was going to be necessary. That's the least that we can request at this time. Communicate with the Longo property owners and say, "It's now time for you to prepare an engineered report showing what is necessary in order to abate the nuisance that you, as the city, and they, as the property owners, know exists." I've had communications with their attorney. He's done exactly what I would have done under the same circumstances. He says, "It's not our problem. We didn't do anything, and we're not going to do anything." We need to motivate them. And I'm asking, please motivate them.
Thank you.
I'll answer questions.
Any questions? Well, I guess my question is, Mr. Lingle, if, if we did that, and they say, "Well, give us six months, we'll do it," what do, what do we do? Wait six months?
No, you don't, you say, you say, no, you don't have six months. Mr. Feng's letter was in December, I believe, or in November, maybe, and it said, "We're going to go on your property to take care of the stuff that is on your property, and we reserve the right to recover those costs." We need their attention. We need them to do something. Brian's suggestion, and I absolutely agree, that we should have a discussion, but it's got to be a serious discussion. It's got to be a meaningful one, and they have to be motivated. And you can motivate them by bringing to bear the authority that the city has over them. Otherwise, there's no incentive.
I think that's what the purpose of the meeting is to do, but it involves other people involved, because they're, the Longo property isn't in a vacuum by itself. There's other properties, including the HOA, that are, have an interest in all this.
Yes.
So that's the approach we're taking.
And the county, and I have been in communication with the county, and I reported to you, I think a month, six weeks ago, that, that Caltrans has some involvement, and I'm happy to, I'm happy to report that Caltrans is finally going to be meeting with us next week. And we're going to be taking a look at all the water that's coming off the 101 and being dumped into this community, and see if we can't do something to-
Is that from the flooding that was up above? Not the one over there, but there was also some minor flooding that came off of Caltrans' property down through the neighborhood. Is that the one you're talking about?
I, yes. There are seven drains that come off the 101 into this development area, and we want them to put in appropriate drainage devices so that the 24-inch pipes don't send gushers out into this community, but instead there's appropriate devices in there that will, will slow the water down and prevent it from, from gushing.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leonard Siegel.
Thank you, Mayor Little and members of the council. I represent, my name is Leonard Siegel, and I represent the Springs Homeowners Association. I'd like to comment with regard to Brian's comments with regard to the termination of the emergency declaration. It seems to me that this is a classic argument of bootstrapping. The issue isn't whether or not permits have been issued. The issue is whether a, an emergency exists. Clearly, an emergency exists. It has existed for many months, and I urge this council to take immediate action, as I, on behalf of the association, have requested for many, many months. And I think frankly that it's an urgent matter, that my client, the association, the Springs Homeowner Association, that has been so dramatically impacted by the terrible storms that we've endured, that the homeowners get a clear reading from the council as to your intentions with regard to actions against the Longo property. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Siegel?
I, I have one. If we said we were going to do certain legal actions against Longo, wouldn't that put us in jeopardy by saying, I won't go any further? You're an attorney, you should think about that. Before you say, what kind of information we should release, be releasing?
Well, the, I understand, of course, that there are confidentiality issues that you folks deal with in terms of legal actions that will be taken. But nonetheless, there is a letter that was sent in December of 2014 that declared this a nuisance, and made demands on Longo, and indicated what the city intended to do if Longo did not comply with the outline set forth in that letter. And I think while you can engage and, and must engage in your confidential communications among yourselves as far as what legal action will be taken, if there has been a decision made, then I think it is incumbent on the council to advise my client as to what it intends to do. The question is, what actions have? Again, I'm not asking as to what has gone on in your executive or closed sessions, but to simply advise my client, is it the intention of this council to take action to compel the eradication and the abatement of the nuisance?
I think I can say that this council is not at all going to quit pursuing a solution to this matter at this time or any time in the future. And, but there is procedures we have discussed, and we'll be talking to a number of, of the key players up in, in and around that area.
The point that I would like to emphasize, though, is that the rationale, as I understand- The point that I would like to emphasize, though, is that the rationale, as I understand, for the termination of the declaration is the fact that permits have been issued. As I say, it seems to me that that's really a bootstrap argument. The real question is, is there still an emergency? And if there is an emergency, and I think, from our perspective, there clearly is, if there is an emergency that continues to exist, the declaration should not be terminated.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question before you go on that one?
He's not through yet.
Well, we're issuing, I'm not an attorney, and I know you are. We're issuing permits here. It just seems a little counterproductive to me if we're issuing permits to say, "Oh, by the way, we still have a potential emergency going on up there."
Well, I would look at it...
That's what I'm struggling with.
Yeah. It seems to me that you're looking, to an outsider, it looks as though you're looking for rationale to terminate the declaration. And because you've made the decision, with conditions, of course, on the owners, when you've made a decision now to allow permits to be issued, recognizing that an emergency condition still exists, that it is totally incongruous to then say that we're going to eliminate the declaration just because the permits have been issued, or that you're prepared to issue permits. And by the way, in issuing the permits, you are requiring the owners to acknowledge the existence of very serious and dangerous conditions. So it's a completely incongruous position to be taken, while, on the one hand, you're saying that, yes, we're going to issue permits, and by requiring the owners to acknowledge the existence of perceived emergency conditions, and then, at the same time, declare that the emergency doesn't exist. It doesn't make sense.
Can I ask one other question?
Sure.
So then the suggestion is, perhaps, we shouldn't issue any permits, then?
Well, I'm not saying that you shouldn't issue permits. I'm not saying that you shouldn't issue permits. You have to do what you need to do as a council in terms of dealing with the conditions that exist with these homeowners and the associations itself. But terminating the declaration isn't a way to resolve a problem. I don't, you know, having heard your discussion already, I don't understand what the rationale is for terminating the declaration when you seem to have acknowledged that an emergency exists. So I'll ask rhetorically, but perhaps you could comment, do you still believe that an emergency exists?
You know, at this point, Mr. Mayor, I think I need to say something. I don't think there's any reason to continue this, and my recommendation is that there not be any further dialogue with the speaker on this point. The city's received a number of claims from these property owners. I think, the comments that I made earlier with respect to the reason why we're recommending the termination, the speaker may disagree with those, but, you know, we've made our recommendation, and I'm a little concerned that having this continued discussion could create some risks to the city.
Your Honor, could I just suggest that we hear the comments that all of the speakers, who, it looks like you have quite a few cards there?
We do.
And then we start our discussion and debate?
Sounds good.
Excuse me, Your Honor, before we send Mr. Siegel away, there is an incorrect statement that has been made. There are five homeowners that are not being allowed to get permits...
That's true.
...until further action on the Hill is taken.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I think I need to interrupt here. We have one speaker is at the podium, and now we've had another one join, and we need to finish one at a time.
This perception made with regard to his statements, that the reasoning behind this is valid because permits are being issued, but there are five homeowners who cannot get permits.
And there are seven that are. So please, sit down. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Siegel. Barbara Williams, now you have your opportunity.
Yeah.
City Council, tonight I speak to you as one of the 932 homeowners at Camarillo Springs, and on behalf of Philly to directly blow the young erosion channel. I am very disappointed here, to be here again, asking you to not terminate the emergency declaration. While yellow-tagged residents are now able to get permits to repair their homes, we still have a number of issues to be resolved. Please, please, just keep extending the emergency declaration, and let's work together to complete efforts to further mitigate efforts on Canelo Mountain. We want to be a part of the NRCS discussions, as we will be the force to get it funded. And there is funding that can be made available, regardless of what Mr. Fox said. As a team, let's determine when the emergency declaration is no longer needed. City staff, what is to be gained by terminating the emergency declaration? The question needs to be answered tonight, or quit recommending it. Does it mean you will no longer be required to have the property owners south of our community abate the nuisance you declared in December 19, 2014? I have attached Mr. Feng's letter. Does it mean the city will no longer support the NRCS's new project? Did you even think it may be impossible to get the new NRCS project approved without an emergency declaration? Does that mean you will no longer try to get other agencies to help us out? Issues that require you to extend the emergency declaration till all are resolved. There are five red-tagged homes that require additional work on Canelo Mountain for you to issue permits to repair or rebuild. That came out in a meeting with Mr. Fox and the homeowners. Insurance issues are still being worked that require this emergency declaration to keep the pressure on to resolve. Property owners south of Camarillo Springs need to further abate the nuisance you declared. The debris platforms installed under the city of Camarillo direction have not been verified to preclude debris flows from damaging homes in the springs. Support and mitigation work from other sources have not been fully vetted and ruled out. Finally, rain is expected to continue throughout the summer and well throughout the rest of the year. By the way, I got a quarter of an inch yesterday at my home. Many of the residents are asking why we can't get mesh on Canelo Mountain like Caltrans installed on PCH. It looks like exactly what we need. The article is attached. The governor's emergency declaration did not result in any support to our community, and we feel Caltrans should provide us with the same debris flow slide protection. Don't residents of our community deserve the same protection as a highway? Thank you. Barbara Williams.
Please. We don't demonstrate in this chamber, okay? Either for or against. Okay, is there any questions of Ms. Williams?
Your Honor, let's tell them why we don't, because we feel we need to hear all the comments, and we don't want anybody to feel intimidated. So we ask people not to boo and not to clap, but just to allow people to talk.
Okay, thank you, councilman. Any questions of Ms. Williams? Okay, well, thank you very much. Ron Spillman, or, excuse me, Bob Spillman.
Hello, my name is Bob Spillman, homeowner at 34 Margarita in Camarillo Springs, CCV board member, as well as a common board member. We do have a serious condition there. We're asking for this emergency declaration to be extended. Anywhere in the state that you did a grading project, a size and the magnitude of what was done on Canelo Mountain there, you would be required to have BMPs, or best management practice for erosion control, in place. Nothing has been done up there. There's one row of sandbags across in front of the, there is no department, the engineering department, your planning department, nobody would allow any contractor to get away with that kind of work. If you have a slope that's over two feet, you have to landscape it. There's nothing there that's going to hold these debris basins in place. So they haven't been tested. We don't know if they're going to work. So you can't say that the emergency declaration can be removed, because you don't know that the emergency has been mitigated. On the second side of the issue, CCV, or Camarillo Springs' community, has not, on the mobile home side, has not had anything done to it. Nobody has addressed the issues that are over there, which are as big or more than there is on the spring side. We've been very lucky that we have not lost any homes, and we feel very sorry for those who have, but we feel we should get the same attention from the city of Camarillo that they have at the springs. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Spillman? Thank you very much. Hal Hyman.
I'm not going to repeat what you've heard over and over again tonight. I certainly agree with the attorneys and our marvelous president of our homeowners association, but I do want to thank the city, which initially came in and did a super job in the cleanup in our community. Really appreciate it. I talked to some of the workers and supervisors about it personally. And then you did a very special thing recently, and you'd have to be in our community to know how special that was. Yellow-tagged people have gotten permits. It has changed their whole outlook on life. They're happy, they're enthusiastic, they're getting bids, and we thank you for your flexibility. Really appreciate it. There's a lot of human interest stories sitting on San Como Lane, on Gattana, and other areas of our community. I wish the newspaper people would put something in the paper about the human interest stories in Camarillo Springs. Very, very special. Some of the yellow-tagged people are here tonight, and maybe they're going to come up and thank you. For a government agency to flex and go back and look at things and change, at least for the yellow-tagged people, that was very special. I don't need to say anymore about the emergency declaration. It makes sense to you, I know it does, to keep the emergency declaration going. And I would invite each of you to come by and talk to some of the people on San Como Lane and Gattana in Camarillo Springs. I'm not sure you get mileage, or gas mileage, or anything like that. Wouldn't it be nice if the city attorney and the city manager said, "Let's go out there, and let's have conversations with people. Let's get a sense of the people in Camarillo Springs and how they're feeling."
Okay, any questions of Mr. Hyman?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Stuart Krieger.
I spoke previously.
He did.
Well, okay, all right. You're waving this, okay? All right. Harold Baker, I think it's, yeah, Baker. Harold Baker.
Could you be a speaker and express one?
Okay, thank you. Ted Kupac?
Kupal.
Kupal.
Your Honor, Mayor Little and respected council members, my name is Ted Kupal, I'm a resident of Camarillo Springs. We appreciate your immediate response by the city of Camarillo in creating the emergency declaration to the disasters which occurred in October and December of last year. However, the 932 property owners are very concerned about the proposal by city staff to terminate the declaration. Recently, city staff indicated the rainy season was over. This doesn't appear to be so, based on yesterday rains, yesterday's rains, and the prediction of a potential 2015-16 El Nino season. To cite a very recent official response, much closer than PCH, by Caltrans about the coming rains, they have just completed an installation of a substantial cable reinforcement to protect their Camarillo Way Station from the rains running down the same mountain range that we are concerned about. The city originally approved and permitted the spring's development over 30 years ago. Since the recent disastrous debris flows occurred, many respected geologists and engineers indicated that it was foolhardy to place a new community of 932 homes in the toe of an obvious debris basin. Their professional opinion has been that it was predictably a disaster waiting to happen. Please consider the possibility that some long-gone city fathers may have made a mistake in judgment in the original permitting process, and correct the sins of your fathers. If you now terminate the declaration, the mountain property owned by the Longo Trust will no more be considered a public nuisance. Consequently, no one will be allowed access to work or inspect mitigating the problems on the hill. The NRCS will discontinue their support of the mitigation project, and the city will still not issue unconditional building permits to repair the red-tagged homes. The homeowners will not be able to get insurance. New debris channels have been discovered, which were born as a result of the above-mentioned storms. These will only increase the potential damage to the properties below. We will not know whether or not the recent work in carriole installations, which were completed as part of the declaration, actually works until a major downpour or El Nino occurs to test the work. Please, on behalf of the 932 Camarillo Springs property owners, who have all been injured, either by direct damage or diminished property values, consider keeping the declaration in place until the next rainy season is over and the results of the mitigation are proven. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Kupal. Matthew Lorimer.
Up here again. I was compelled to speak for these people. You know, I've been coming here for seven years to city council. It took you 20 years, you bought a firehouse, it's been sitting vacant, it's got graffiti on it, on the sign, which I called the city clerk on. 10 years or longer to get a high school done in here, and now we have people here, been waiting months for you guys to make, use your time wisely. When citizens have homes, they're your priority. The seniors are your priority. They've been in the town the longest. You need to redirect your time and spend your time on this issue. It should be number one, because these are your citizens. You know, developers come to the city, and you guys jump over, head over heels to pass development. You should spend your time and resolve these issues. It's very important, because these people have asked for it. And you know something? This city council could learn something from the Park District. You know, the Park District has staff, they say things. This staff, they're all nice people here. City attorney's nice, city manager's nice, but it's okay. Each and every one of you of councilmen, I've been here, sometimes you say no. You were elected to office, you do not have to follow your staff all the time. It's okay to say no. So we'll say it together. It's okay to say no. You know why? Because the people in the audience have lived here for years, and they're asking you for something, and I don't think it's too much to consider it. I don't think you should always follow the city attorney or the city staff, because we're not always right, you can always learn, because people don't always have the answers. These people here are here continuously. I've been here for seven years, and probably be here another seven years. But again, they've come here, they're your citizens, and they've been here a long time. They're retired. They should be enjoying themselves and getting their houses fixed, and having a city council that stands up for them. And sometimes it's okay to say to the city attorney, "Sorry, we're not going to do what you want this time." So I wish that you guys would listen to your citizens. Again, you know, I don't live there, but these people are coming here because they want you as city councilman. You know something? Each and every one of you can speak up and use your voice and say, "We're going to do something right." So you might want to think about that tonight. Thank you.
Don't go away. I have a question. Come back, because I don't let you get away with all this garbage. You just said, number one, we turned down two major projects this past year, for good reasons, water and other things. We've got some more restrictions coming. That's one. Don't talk. You had your talk.
No, okay, Mike, once you're asking questions.
Firehouse question. What do you know about the firehouse?
Well, Mike, wait, Matt, you know what it is, Mike? You're trying to make excuses.
What do you know about the firehouse?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Every time I come up, we go through the back and forth. What you're trying to do is make excuses.
Matt, you had your say, now it's my turn, one more thing.
No, you asked me a question, you're trying to evade everything with me.
Go away.
Mike, okay? Thank you, have a nice evening, Mike.
You've had your conversation.
Yeah.
All right, is there anyone else out there? That's the end of the cards. Is there anyone?
Is there anyone else out there that wishes to be heard? Yes, sir. Come forward, and you'll need to fill out a card after you've... Okay. Please identify yourself for the record.
I've been listening to the conversation.
Could you identify yourself?
My name is Stan Roberts. I live in the Camarillo Springs.
Okay, thank you.
I've been listening to the conversation, and the one thing that comes to mind that concerns me is if you remove the emergency declaration, that in effect takes us off the table in terms of inspecting the mountain and requiring further work from the Longo people to make it a safer environment. And in my opinion, if you take away this declaration... Well, let me ask a question first. If you don't, if you take away the declaration, is it a simple matter to declare another declaration if we have another disaster? And then the problem with that is, why take away the declaration and give us another disaster to prove the point that we're trying to make now? We need to resolve this mountain issue before we move ahead. And so, in my opinion, you need to leave that declaration in place, if that's what's required, in order to conduct these inspections and make decisions about the safety of that mountain, rather than wait for another disaster.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions? Mr. Robertson? Not?
I have a question of the city attorney.
Yes.
Could you tell us, again, what was the purpose of the emergency declaration? What were the benefits of having one? And then finally answer, so it's a three-part question. And then finally answer Mr. Roberts' question. If we remove the emergency declaration or rescind it, can we still do something about the Longos Martin, Mountain?
Well, the original purpose of the issuance of the proclamation and the reason why it was issued is because the city manager determined that the debris flow that occurred on October 31 and the morning of November 1 created an emergency condition, and he has the authority to issue that proclamation. So that's the reason why it was issued and the basis for it. The benefits are that it gave the city manager certain authority, if it was needed, to take appropriate actions with respect to the emergency, if there were any emergency powers that would be necessary to be implemented. I've heard some discussion this evening about the abatement of the nuisance and how that may or may not be related to the proclamation and the effects that this would have with respect to continuing a discussion with the Longos. In my opinion, if the council should vote to discontinue or terminate the emergency proclamation, that in no way impacts the ability of the city to continue to have a discussion with the parties, including the Longos, in terms of a solution to the issues that are presented with the Camarillo Springs area. And there was three parts to this question. If it was removed, what would be the impact? And my answer is that it would not prevent the city from moving forward with respect to what we believe and what we're recommending as being the appropriate action here, which is to have a meeting, and we will intend to, as I indicated in my earlier comments, in the immediate future, to reach out to all of the interested parties, to engage in a meeting to attempt to determine the appropriate approach for how to move forward. And we intend to be diligent in that effort. In terms of the last several months, there's been a lot of discussions, obviously, with the fact that the rainy season was continuing through April, at least the official rainy season. So obviously, it would have been inappropriate during that time to be making any final decisions as to what was going to happen. And in terms of the comments that I've heard about, why terminate the proclamation? I've explained, again, in my earlier comments, that the city has now reached a point where we are issuing building permits, and it is my view that the city, if they're going to be issuing building permits, should not be doing that. If we're going to be declaring that there's an emergency there, so it'd be inconsistent with a declaration of emergency to be simultaneously issuing building permits and allowing people to rebuild their homes. The fact that there are continuing risks out there doesn't necessarily mean that there's an emergency, and it doesn't prevent us from having a continuing discussion with the parties about potential solutions.
If I could also add a little bit more specific to what Mr. Perick just said. The emergency proclamation process has been around for many, many years. There's been a variety or various changes over the years from a government perspective, primarily the feds, in terms of reimbursement with this process that's involved. The proclamation is first declared typically for an earthquake. The benefits that go, and this is just generally speaking with an emergency, whether it be a debris flow, an earthquake, it could be a fire, anything that is an emergency, it goes with the emergency proclamation process. Typically, and I want to get a little bit more into the detail, when the benefits that happen when this happens, and it's a matter of literally, I won't say minutes, but literally hours, that we declare. It's very obvious. We open the Emergency Operations Center. There's a document that Mr. Perick has pre-drafted. We fill in the dates, we name the emergency. These are all federal requirements. I then sign that, and we come back to the council. If we have to have a special meeting, we do so. We've done that in the past to ratify and adopt the emergency proclamation. Now, what the proclamation does, it does a number of things. Most specifically, the benefit that I'm aware of, and I believe applies in this case, is it allows the city to order and direct additional safety, first responders to the scene, whether it be what you had at Camp Springs, or whether it be an earthquake or something similar in terms of an emergency. We can bring out the troops, fire, police, we can call in mutual aid. There are requirements of safety personnel to respond and react to our requests if we have the proclamation. Nothing comes for free. These are very expensive operations, I think you all know that. The equipment that comes out, the overtime and so on, that goes with the personnel that respond to these events. Think of the Springs fire and what that entailed in terms of cost, millions and millions and millions of dollars. The emergency proclamation allows for application to the feds for reimbursement of these costs. That would be not for just the first responders, but also for the staff in terms of recovery. That would be typically your city staff, the administrative work. There's also items that... There are also items typically, this is an example, it probably did not apply to your event, but please keep in mind, I'm just trying to give you a feel for what the emergency proclamation is supposed to be doing. In an earthquake, typically what happens is there's a shortage of food, supplies such as plywood, water, a number of items that are in high demand, and in the past, gouging has happened where those that had the stores and the supplies, they gouged. They put everything on hold. Gasoline is a big example. It's illegal to do that if there's an emergency proclamation now with current law. There's a number of things that go with an emergency proclamation. You will find that your concerns, and I'm not asking you to trust us, but please understand that there's other perspectives. You'll find that the work we will be continuing to do with the NRCS that Mr. Fox described, that will continue with or without the emergency proclamation. There's been a nexus, I think, that's been created, and it's, I won't say it's our fault. We have come back to the council, the staff, a number of times and recommended that the proclamation be terminated, stopped, and we've continued. And I think we are guilty of creating a nexus and a misunderstanding of what the process is really used for. And I'll take full responsibility for that. It's been my recommendation to terminate. We have also recommended continuing because we thought it was the right thing to do. You guys have gone through a really, really tough six months. We all have. You're going to find that we're not going to back off, the NRCS is not going to back off without the emergency proclamation. We've also recommended that the parties... You can see what happened tonight. There's a lot of different thoughts, feelings, there's a lot of different legal issues going on. We think it's best to get together, we all know this. If everybody grabs their lawyer, runs to the corner, it's going to get very expensive, it's going to take a lot of time. We think it's best to get the parties in one room and try and work things out in a cooperative, quick manner. That's not going to change. We've recommended that going forward, in the same night that we're recommending the emergency proclamation discontinue. We would not make that recommendation if we thought the proclamation was going to stop that process. It's independent of that process. We are processing building permits. I need to comment that when we process building permits, it's really a ticket to reoccupy your building. It's not just to process a permit. You will then be able to reoccupy your building. And there's a really, really big disconnect. I know there's a lot of conflict with the logic, but there's a big disconnect if we've got a proclamation and we're allowing folks to move back in. That doesn't make sense. It really doesn't. And there needs to be, I think that decision, and that's why we brought it back tonight, there really needs to be a decision made on sending that mixed message. I can guarantee you that if there's a problem, even the hint of a problem, that starts, that may start occurring in the future, we will declare the emergency proclamation again. The last item I had, as I've heard, and I don't know every single situation, but I think farmer's insurance has been the predominant insurance carrier out of Camarillo Springs. My understanding is the policy that I have read, at least one, I've heard about several others, that there's a one-year period of time to submit your claims and work the damages out with the insurance carrier. In my understanding, there's, you can extend up to two years total, 24 months, on six-month increments. My understanding is the policies will be extended based on the emergency proclamation that was already declared. It doesn't need to be ongoing. And if there's issues, if there's enough already declared and in the documents that creates eligibility for the homeowners to get that six-month extension two times. That's my understanding. I don't think there's a tie between the emergency proclamation being active in your private insurance policies. That's my understanding. So those comments that have been presented, I'm not saying that they're inaccurate. I think there's a misunderstanding of information in the lengthy words that I've just given. I think, I hope that helps, that that's really not what the emergency proclamation is for, how we've been using it. So I don't have any other comments. Appreciate your time.
Okay. I said earlier that this council is determined to see this thing through, and you've heard from the city staff, and I think from the city council, and you're hearing it again from me, that we will pursue all efforts to, first of all, to bring the parties together who are involved, including the HOAs and the property owners of the hillsides, and try to reach some solution to it. If we don't, then the city was prepared to do other things, but we're going to take it one step at a time. And we're not going to rush in and start suing everybody, because that, all that does is just extends the issues and extends the time. So I can promise you that unless any city councilman wants to say anything else, I think that kind of answers the question of whether we're going to stay there or not. We will be there. Yes?
Brian, I just have one question. Is there any legal ramifications that you're aware of if you issue building permits and you still do have an emergency declaration in place? Is there any legal ramifications that you're aware of?
Well, let me just say this. I believe, as I've indicated a couple of times in my comments, that if we're issuing building permits, that in my opinion, it would be inconsistent to be doing that and simultaneously extending a proclamation of emergency.
Your honor.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution terminating the proclamation of emergency.
There's a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, we...
Actually, I had a couple more questions. You didn't call from questions from us.
Hold that motion, Dan.
Thank you, if you don't mind. I asked this of the city manager, after you described what an emergency proclamation does. Is there anything you know of that would be of a benefit to keeping it in place?
I truly thought, a couple meetings ago, and I mentioned right here, that the NRCS had mentioned, and I heard this third party, and it's my fault for not checking on it firsthand. I had heard, I heard it, yeah, I heard it third party. I had heard that the NRCS said they would go out and reconsider the K-Rail design that we talked about this evening, and they are going to do that, and it would be helpful if the proclamation was still in place. That is not accurate, and that is my fault for mentioning that and bringing that forward as though that was valid information. They are, the NRCS is there, and they will continue to be there as much as they can, with or without the proclamation, the emergency proclamation in place. I can't think of any other reason. I did mention, I think, several months ago as well, it might be helpful if a, if an owner was seeking a small business association loan, and on the application, it had comments and you would put down, "The city has an emergency proclamation." Well, I think that is true at that time, but given what has happened and the number of proclamation extensions, if there is anyone seeking any type of funding, repair funding, you can still make that declaration. It's in the record that there was an emergency proclamation adopted by the city at the time of the occurrence and after that, for several months after the occurrence. And if there is a lender considering an application, I'm assuming for funding, I believe that they would consider that as valid proof that there was a problem at that time to qualify that applicant for that loan. It doesn't have to be an ongoing proclamation forever.
How about the idea that it would, if it's still in place, it might help find funding to help mitigate the issue out there? What do you...
The damage was caused on a date specific. The funding would be to fix the damage caused on that date specific, and during that time, that event was considered worthy of an emergency proclamation declared by the city council. Nothing will take that away. That's all valid factual information that will go towards the potential funding for repair.
So you don't have to have that emergency proclamation effective on the day you apply for funding? You just have to be able to approve, to prove that that condition existed and has not been corrected?
Correct. That condition is eligible potentially for that funding, and that it was to a level of the damage that the emergency proclamation was declared.
Okay. And then, I guess my other question is, is the one thing that I've heard of a reason not to continue it is the idea that we're issuing permits. Is there any other negative for keeping it in place?
I don't believe that there's a time for politics, good politics. We don't want to have any bad politics.
Not politics.
There's politics. I don't, I don't think it's good to mix politics and safety, and this is a safety issue, it's a very serious matter. And I think, frankly, without offending anyone, and if I do, I apologize in advance, we recommended termination of the proclamation at least two other times, and we thought it was appropriate then, several months ago. And I think we've been trying to reach out and help folks, which we are still trying to do, but I don't think that's the right way to, I think it was misleading, as I previously stated. And that's, and that's our fault. That's the city. I think we were trying to do the right thing, but I think it sent the wrong message, and it's a confusing message.
So I'm correct when I say that there really, in your eyes, is no benefit to keeping it in place at this point in time?
That is correct.
Any other questions?
No questions, but I got...
Oh, okay. All right, let's...
Because we're voting, we have a first and a second, now we have comments.
Well, we'll ask for comments, and go ahead.
You know, the first, when it rains hard, my first thoughts are, because of what happened out there, is... out there, is what's happening out at Camp Springs. A lot of times, I'll call John Fraser, write away, "John, you heard anything about Camp Springs?" Because you know what happened. I've heard this, I've listened to both sides now, and I've listened to the staff and listened to everything, and I have not heard anything to tell me there's no reason why we shouldn't leave it. I mean, it makes it look bad, but we're doing that right now. And in their agreements that they have in their hand to get another permit to build, there's some wording in there that reflects that in a way. And so I don't see, it makes people feel better, it doesn't hurt us at all. I think that leaving this in place would be good. We don't know what's going to happen this summer. I looked at, I just looked at this, and it said, "No rain through almost the end of July." But it also said that through this month, and the meteorologists will tell you how they, the form, the things form on the ocean sometimes and come in, that's what happened to them. That formed over the ocean, came in and flooded them. So I don't see any problem, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't. I haven't heard, been told anything why we should not leave it in place. It makes them feel better and secure, I don't know why, but if that's what they feel, I just feel like leaving it in place.
Your Honor, can I just make a comment?
Yes, sure.
Yeah, I'm not up here to, you know, speak for anybody else, but I have a philosophical, I'm a philosophical person, and if I can't defend my vote, I can't support it. I don't want to stop issuing building permits. And for me to defend that we're issuing building permits and we still have a declaration of emergency is something that I'm not comfortable doing. So that's why I seconded Charlotte's motion.
And that's why I made the motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry, did they say this would stop building permits? You didn't say that. Whether you kept it in place or not, it's not going to stop building permits.
Well, we're just...
Wait, 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 I heard this from staff, Charlotte.
No, this, this, whether the proclamation is in place or not, will not, the building permits are going to be...
Thank you.
Continued.
Okay, as I was saying when I was interrupted, I think that it doesn't make sense to have the declaration saying there's an emergency, and it's very dangerous, and then to be telling people they can go ahead and, and I don't want to argue it, you have your feeling and I have mine, I just wanted to state my feeling.
That's right.
If I could, I probably talk too much already, if we, and I don't have the declaration on the detail, the statement that's prepared, if we were to look through that in detail, it would be inconsistent with issuing building permits.
Any other comments? Jan?
Well, I guess I'm conflicted here, because I certainly understand what Mr. Morgan is saying, that sometimes, you know, we do things just to kind of give comfort if it, if it helps in all of this, and up until now, we've been told that it really didn't hurt to leave it in place, and if it helped them, you know, so be it. I too am a little conflicted with the fact that if you're going to issue building permits, it's kind of hard to do when you've still got an emergency declaration in place, so it's a tough decision on which way to choose. But I think that if indeed the proclamation is lifted, we have to keep in mind, it can come back within an hour if we need it, and it doesn't mean we can't stop trying to find a resolution to the issue that exists out there. And I think that's what's comforting me, is I know that this isn't really going to stop anything, that every, the work will go on to try to resolve the issues.
Your Honor?
Yes?
I'm going to read you what the emergency declaration said, and we simply continued it. It said, "Camarillo Municipal Code Section 2.32.020 defines an emergency as a condition of disaster or extreme peril to the safety of persons and property, caused by such conditions as air pollution, fire, flood, hazardous material incidents, storm epidemic, storm, comma, epidemic, riot, drought, sudden and severe energy shortage, plant or animal infestation or disease, or earthquake warning, or conditions other than those resulting from a labor controversy. Conditions of extreme peril to the safety of persons and property have arisen as a result of debris flow which occurred on October 31st, November 1st, and November 1st impacting several homes and properties." And then it goes on. "I don't believe that those types of emergencies continue to exist today." That's... It's that immediate peril? That immediate peril.
Or potential peril.
It doesn't say potential, it says immediate peril.
Okay.
Any other comments? Well, let me, let me, my comments. I, first of all, I appreciate the city manager setting out in some detail what an emergency proclamation, and having done that in my career a couple times with issuing proclamations, I agree totally with his comments, that is, that they are issued for a specific purpose. They are not issued as a blanket, you know, we're going to do it forever because it is set out, and as the council member Craven said, she read the language, it is, the language is specific in nature. So I voted twice to extend this emergency proclamation, and I did it because, as council member McDonald said, it did give comfort. And, and just in, just as a side, one of the reasons we have taken so long to get to where we are was we spent a great deal of time wrestling with this issue of the houses. We felt that was first and foremost something that we had to get resolved and could allow those people to get back in, those who had houses that were potential to be restored. And that took a great deal of time, several months frankly, to come to some resolution of that, those issues. But I, and if I thought that by doing something with this proclamation, by ending the proclamation, it would, it would stop the issuance of permits, I wouldn't vote for it at all. However, I do think that we have, we've come to the point where we can move ahead and get, get this emergency proclamation behind us. If, God forbid, we have something else come up, as you said, we can, we can do it in an hour. And it will be specific to that incident, whatever it may be, if, if anything. So I think it's probably time to do that. But I can again, simply restate what, and I'm speaking for the council on this, we will be there to get this thing resolved, and we will, but we will do it in a way that we try, which we think is the best way to approach the, all the parties and see if we can get them together without looking at extended litigations or whatever else there is. If that fails, then so be it, but we're going to try to work it through with the city staff and the representatives of the property owners to get this thing resolved, and try to come up with some solutions that will last beyond, just, just a couple blocks, a couple months. So, anyway, there is a motion and a second to terminate the proclamation. Any questions? Any comments?
Just one last thing, if this comes back and there's no, if permits aren't, excuse me, aren't being given out?
The council's talking right now.
If the permits aren't given out because of something like this, I'll come back and vote to get rid of this. But I don't see that happening right now. That's the only reason.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, please vote. Motion carries four to one.
Before we leave this, this issue, could I ask for something? We've heard talk tonight, and the first time I've heard it, talking about this mesh that Caltrans uses. I haven't heard that come up in the discussion. Can we have some feedback on that issue next time we talk about this? See if there's something that can be done?
Sure, they had an article in the paper with a picture or two a couple weeks ago, and we...
Oh, I know, on Mountain Blue and whatnot, but I meant as far as regarding here, if it could be used.
Yeah, and I'm not going to be conclusive on it, but in reading the article and thinking, it's the first thought that came to my mind as well, could we do that? I think the issue's going to be is the mountain's huge, and I think it was, if I'm not, I think it was, it was about $100,000 a piece of mesh. It was, it was somewhere in that range, it was about $700,000, I think, to do a very limited area.
Also, one of the reasons for that, because I used to drive that Pacific Coast Highway all the time, they did it every time they had big rains in the old days, to hold rocks up. And not holding the mud coming down up, it's just to hold the rocks so they don't get on the roadway. The stuff that's coming down from where we reported off the freeway, that's mud. I saw the mud go through that neighborhood, I went up there and looked at it, it was muddy everywhere. Not the rocks so much, but mud. And so that mesh won't take care of mud, they have to have...
Well, I think they were talking about the mountain with all the rocks that came off of it, and the debris, not just mud.
No, I'm talking about earlier, when someone talked about them...
I think that's what she was talking about. No?
I was talking about Canal Mountain.
That's right.
Yeah, and typical, I think, my, yeah, and we'll find out, but I think just roughly, I think there's other ways to mitigate that are more cost-effective.
Well, I'll, she asked, and I was interested too, if we could just have it considered when everything else is considered.
Sure, absolutely.
Can I ask just one follow-up? Can you also see potentially where it might fit in up there?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. We thank you for coming again, I know it's, you've been down here a lot, and we appreciate your interest, and believe me, we're trying to do what we can to get this thing resolved. Thank you very much.
It just comes down, they won't, they won't do that. It's a lot, because I used to ride that road.
I bought it up, so we need to explore it.
Yeah, no, it's good. But it costs a lot, so...
What a mess.
Over there...
That means the five homes in San Como now are no longer going to be denied permits, correct?
Nope. Doesn't mean that at all, Barbara. Doesn't mean that at all.
If there's no emergency, why are you denying them permits to repair their homes?
Because the homes still cannot be occupied.
You're mixing, I think you're mixing up...
Yeah, we're mixing up some stuff.
You're talking the red tape?
I think that we need to not have this discussion during a meeting.
We're done, aren't we?
I guess I'm not getting the story.
Let's wait till the council, till the audience clears the chambers.
She needs to get over this.
Yeah, she is. Really, it makes sense. Oh, no, no, that's, no, 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 no.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move ahead with item B, resolution approving the environmental impact report, North Pleasant Valley Groundwater Treatment Facility, WT 11-01. And we have a staff report.
Did you want to do an introduction? Okay. Good evening, Mayor Little, and...
Speak right into that, would you? I can't hear you.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor Little, and members of the city council. Before you is, for your consideration, is certification of the final EIR for the North Pleasant Valley Groundwater Disalters project. So the outline for, presentation outline is as follows. I'll give a, I know that you've heard over the years what the project is about, but just for the record, I wanted to give you some background on the project and why it was needed, and just wanted to give a project description. The environmental impact report, and all of the steps that were followed in the preparation of the environmental impact report, before I forget, I have Matt Ingamels with Padre and Associates, who was consulted by, who was contracted by the city to repair the EIR, so he's here to help me with any, answer any questions that might arise during the presentation and afterwards. So some of the alternatives evaluated, I'll give a little bit more of information and detail on the sites and pumping scenarios that were considered, the potential environmental impacts associated with the proposed project, public review opportunities for the public and some of the responsible agencies, and then the comments and responses for it, and a brief summary of the mitigation and monitoring plan. And finally, the proposed project's recommendation for you tonight. So project description and background. So this is the city's, it's an aerial of the city, as you can see, it's the 101 and Lewis Road, and at, before the drought, our ground, our water supply composition was 45% groundwater and 55% imported, and it was approximately 10,000 acre feet a year. And the groundwater supply was, was generated or pumped from four different locations, two from the northeast area of the city, which is wells A and B, at approximately 2250 acre feet a year, and then there is the southwest area of the city, which is where well D and Airport 3 are located. And I'm trying to distinguish the two areas because of some of the information that's going to be coming up next. So as you can see, it's, it's a little bit faded here, but there is an area of the city in the northeast corner that is shaded in red, and that is, right now, what we estimate the salt plume that has been generated outside of the city limits and outside of the local groundwater basin. And this source of water has caused, it's what we call, what I refer to as, or what we refer to as foreign water, which is not naturally replenished, but it's imported water, or I should say, water being generated outside of the city and the local groundwater basins. So what have, what have we been seeing since 1994? We've seen, in the northeast area of the city, our wells have risen significantly, over 250 feet of groundwater has, has, the groundwater levels have risen at a very short period of time. As a result of that rise in groundwater, we've also had a deterioration of groundwater quality, and that quality, when I talk about groundwater quality, I'm taking, talking mostly about salts. Chloride, TDS, sulfates have risen quite, quite a bit, and when you compare it to our wells in the southwest corner, is, the difference in the composition of the water is quite, is quite noticeable. So that, that is a reason, the need for a project, is that that water is, we are not able to serve that water and blend it to, with it, or import it to sue our customers. So it's slowly getting to the point where we're actually having to find alternative local sources of water to serve our customers. So what is proposed, or the idea is the North Pleasant Valley Groundwater Disalter. So we're, we're planning on using two, two of the existing wells, which is wells A and B. We have a 9,000 acre foot groundwater treatment facility. We're also proposing to drill two new wells, and in addition, is to drill monitoring wells that will be incorporated into the operation of the proposed project. Project benefits. It mitigates some of the groundwater, the brackish plume that has, that is currently unusable and not able to be blended. The pool water quality groundwater is now put to beneficial use once it's treated. We also, because of the source of water in, on the potable side, we also are able to improve water quality problems that we've been having on our wastewater side, and therefore recycled water potential for, its potential of use is increased. of use is increased. And there is the exportation of salt that is enabled once we treat that water, and it actually has a regional benefit for improving water quality and salts removal outside of the watershed. And it also enables the Camrio Sanitary District to stop, get incurring annual fines because of the high salts in the wastewater. So on a perspective of what this project does is actually, and you, when you look at the Cuyahoga Creek watershed, and this is an estimate out of the TMDL documents that were approved back in 2008, this project would eliminate, or at least allow 62,000 pounds a day of salts to be removed and discharged outside of the watershed.
That's a lot.
Wow. Yes.
Wow.
So this is, this is just for chloride. So when, when you look at TDS and sulfate, you're actually looking at multiple hundreds, thousands of, of pounds a day that's removed just by operating this project. The environmental impact report, we actually, so first of all, I'll talk about what the sites that were evaluated in the environmental impact report. Eight of them were evaluated. They're indicated in yellow squares. We were looking at sites that were approximately just under five acres in size. And we were trying, some of those locations are within the city limits, but for the most part, they're outside of the city limits. And then, once those eight were identified, we then had, went ahead and shortlisted four sites, just because of their feasibility and actually being close to existing infrastructure that the city has. So on the alternatives pumping side of things, for those four alternatives, we looked at the no project, the 4,500 acre foot per year pumping scenario. And I'll, I'll get into a little bit more of detail on, on each of the pumping scenarios and their benefits and pros and cons. And then the 9,000 acre feet per year and the 11,800 acre foot per year project on the pumping. So the no project, what does, what is, what happens? It doesn't, it does not achieve the TMDL goals. It does not remove that 62,000 pounds of chloride outside of the watershed. That brackish plume continues to migrate into the main portion of the basin. So those are the, basically, the no project alternative would achieve. Wells A and B would no longer be able to operate, and we would have to start looking at, the city would have to start looking at alternative groundwater sources. And there would be no reduction of imported water delivery. So our dependence on state water would continue.
Wow.
On the 4,500 acre foot per year alternative, we would use our current city allocate, groundwater allocation that's managed by the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency. There would be no reduction in imported water deliveries, would not achieve the TMDL goals for the region. The brackish plume would continue to migrate into the PV basin, maybe not at the rate that it currently, at the no project level, but it does continue to stay in, there are, would be pockets of this groundwater, of this brackish groundwater that would be in, in, in the, in the area. And it would be economically and feasible to have a smaller facility than what's being proposed. The 9,000 acre foot alternative, it is economically feasible. Rates, groundwater treatment rates would, would be less than, than current imported. It would achieve TMDL goals for the region. It would export a significant amount of salts outside. It would assume that no, it assumes that no upstream water will reach the basin. So basically, what this is, what we're, we took the extra, I guess, conservative approach in analyzing the, the impacts and assumed that this project would at one point be cut off from that surface flow that's currently mounding within the basin itself. So that, that will tie into what the life of the project is. The brackish plume would be mitigated over a 25-year period. Water levels would report, revert back to historical, which I'll get a little bit, some of the comments that came in do allude to, to that, that, and that, I guess, that issue. The 11,800 acre foot per year alternative is based on the city's max water demand. So if we were to go to an 11,800 acre foot facility, it would generate approximately 10,000 acre feet per year, maybe a little less. And so there would be times of the year that we would either have to sell that. It's just, it just kind, for us, it would probably be a little bit too big. It achieves the same benefits as a 9,000 acre foot per year alternative, but it does lower levels, water levels at the end of the project period to below historical. So that definitely could be, perceived as a significant impact. So some of the potential environmental impacts evaluated are, are outlined here in, in this slide. One of the, some of the most significant ones that were needed, quite a bit of, of analysis included the water hydrology and water quality. That was probably one of the most extensive analysis that, that needed to be done for this project. The other one would be on transportation and circulation, on the construction, along with noise, and I believe it was agriculture also. So those were the ones that needed, that was, that we did quite a bit of analysis on.
What is the definition for environmental justice?
So you had to, you have to analyze on environmental justice is whether the facility is located in, let's say, an economically, what's the terminology? I'm going to, I'm going to look at, Joe, economically distressed area, or?
Yes, that's correct.
So are you, are you citing this because it's in a, maybe in a poor neighborhood, or?
That's what I was afraid it's meant.
Yes.
You know what? They used that today. They sent that to us, an air quality management thing, and our own person sat back, what does this have to do with air quality? Instead, talking about social issues, why is that involved in this? I, excuse me, but?
It, under the sequo, under the state guidelines, we have to look at that, that, that type of an issue. And along with, for example, like growth, growth inducement. So those are, those are required areas that we have to analyze.
Thank you.
And maybe, maybe Joe could elaborate a little bit more on that. Okay.
So you know that's a new one.
Environmental justice. So some of the public review opportunities, notice of, of preparation or scoping meetings were, or scoping, public review were conducted back in 2008. And in 2003, we received 10 comments in 2008, and 17 in 2013, that helped us guide some of this environmental impact analysis information that we, that needed to get generated. The draft environmental impact report was out for public review in 2014, and we received 10 comments. And based on some of the comments, or at least one of the, the agency's comments that were received, we, they requested that we go through, the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency requested that we go through a pub, an analysis or a thorough review by a third party for, for, on, on their groundwater studies. So, which was an appendix of the draft EIR. So we went ahead and hired a peer review person, team, and looked at this draft environmental impact report, reviewed the comments we received from Fox Canyon, I believe it was LAFCO and the DSal LLC. And based on that, they suggested that, or recommended that we recirculate just portions of the draft environmental impact report, based on some revisions that we had made to the, to the water resources section of the document, alternatives analysis related to water resources. And then also some revisions that were made to the groundwater study. So based on that, we went out in earlier this year for a 45-day review period, and we received seven comments. And based on the seven comments, we did not find anything new, or anything new was identified in those comments. So the final environmental impact report was prepared, which I believe was, was a CD on your packet. There was also a summary of the comments and responses section. I believe it was starting on page seven of your docket, of the packet, which is a summary. And then section 12 of the, of the final EIR are the full set of comments and responses that were provided. And based on that, we received one comment about two days after we, we, that the final EIR was mailed to the, to the people that made the comments. And we corrected that, and we, it was a little bit of an oversight. We correct that, and it is in your summary of comments and responses. And that was a comment that we received from last, LAFCO. And then another one we received today, which is in your red folder item. And I'll, I'll get a little bit more into the next sections of what exactly kind of comments that we received. And I'll, I'll talk, I'll, I'll deal with that in, in a minute. So on the comments and responses, like I said, we have the, the actual comments, specific comments and responses, we're, are in your, your packet. But I wanted to maybe some, or like almost briefly, go over some of the topics of discussion or, or comments that we received. Some of the comments we received were from utility conflicts. They wanted to make sure that, that if there were utility conflicts, that, especially on the electrical side, that we did not, that we, we properly got the permits and notified them in advance. The next one was an annexation, if this facility was to receive water or sewer service, that we needed to add next to the appropriate service area. So we acknowledged that. The loss of farmland was another comment that we received. And we actually, the, the concern was whether we had, there were, there was a loss of farmland over the five acre threshold. And in this instance, there is, we are below the five acre threshold, and some of the pipeline, actually, facilities are within current farm pathways. So they're actually not being farmed. So that, that was another response that we, we were able to give. The growth inducement is, this, this, this project is not a growth inducement, is not a need for growth inducement. It actually just serves current residents, and it just allows us to utilize water supply, local water supply that's currently unusable. Another comment that we received was reducing habitat, fishing wildlife habitat. And in this instance, we are nowhere near a fishing wildlife habitat, yes.
Lucy, wouldn't, in fact, you could say, since a lot less salt is going in the water, that it would improve the wireless habitat that they want so badly with, that reduced?
Yes, you could say that. Drainage. Drainage, if we were to alter drain, current drainage patterns, that we needed to get appropriate permits for altering those channels, specifically related to the red channels, the ones that are, that are under the Watershed Protection District's jurisdiction. And now we're getting into the, the ones that are a little bit more of, involved. And it had seawater intrusion. And one of the concerns was seawater intrusion. And our groundwater model did not show that the increased pumping, which would, would lower levels to a way that would kind of make it easier for seawater intrusion. So that, that is not, that is not a case, but that is, that is something that is a continued concern. And that was brought up in the letter that was in the red folder for you. Subsidance is another one that was in the red folder item. And it is not anticipated that subsidence is going to be an issue. We are, believe that back in the early, I mean, late 80s, early 90s, quite a bit of, from the drought, the water levels had already compressed the current soils in the area. So we do not anticipate that those compressed soils were, will continue any further. But we do have subsidence monitoring in our monitoring and, and observation program, monitoring plan, mitigation monitoring plan. The pumping rates, that is another one of the items that was in your red folder, folder item. And they, the concern is that the increased pumping of 22 or 2,200 acre feet per year at that location, in that area, and increasing it to 9,000 will cause a depression in that area and call, and cause all sorts of regional problems for it. Groundwater levels below sea level. We recognize that, that we will be, at the end of the project life, that this, the groundwater levels in the area will be at historic lows. And they, and we believe that those, those groundwater levels are not for a prolonged period of time, and they will recover as, as natural groundwater replenishment occurs after the project life is, project is, is complete. And there is a mitigation monitoring plan that is, for regular monitoring of groundwater levels is, is going to be incorporated in this.
Your Honor, Your Honor, I have a question on that. That is assuming the worst-case scenario where no more water would be flowing from Simi and Moore Park down the creek and be replenishing this.
Yes.
However, if that didn't stop immediately, and there's no plans right now to stop it, and if it continued, the water would not go down to that historic low level?
You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, maybe at this point, I'm just going to reinforce the presentation that Mr. and Mrs. McGovern is giving. And this is the one to highlight here, where it would, under the most conservative scenario, the council member Craven just laid out, if it did reach historic levels, that doesn't mean there's a problem. And, and the benefit here that we have, that a lot of projects don't have, that have modeling, is a model is a prediction of what might occur. In this case, we've been there before, and this historic level is the example of that. 20 years ago, we were at the historic level, and that wasn't just for a short period of time. It was for a couple decades. And during that period, we didn't have seawater intrusion. Again, as mentioned, if there was seawa, subsidence, that's done and over with. It's not, you know, it doesn't bounce back up when it fills up with water again. It stays compressed. So we know from historic evidence what is, what would occur if the most conservative scenario occurred, and that is that we pump down to the historic level. So this isn't a prediction. It's something we've experienced before. So this isn't a prediction, it's something we've experienced before and know the consequences. And there weren't consequences when that occurred for decades before this plume of water started raising the water levels.
If I could add too, this has been thought of as such a negative situation to go to historic levels. If we do go to the historic level, chances are the brackish salty water that's the problem the mound, has been removed, mitigated and treated. So it's not a bad thing that if we do go to the historic level, it's the bad water that will be, will have been treated and gone.
How many, excuse me, real quick, how many years ago, I can't remember, did the city of Simi Valley start pumping the water from underground, you know, from their brackish water into the creek? Because it's coming in their sidewalks, high up above, they couldn't even build in certain areas because the water level was so high. When did they start pumping into the creek?
That, the city of Simi Valley started developing in the seventies. So a significant amount of groundwater, or at least wastewater, has been discharged into the Arroyo. And that, it took about maybe 20 years for it to reach Camarillo. It was slowly filling basins as it's coming, on the way to Camarillo.
So 20 years ago, it started doing that?
Here in Camarillo, yeah. In 94, that's when we started seeing the significant rise.
Okay. No, I like it now, keep pumping it. It's coming our way.
Okay, please.
Okay, I'm almost finished.
Okay.
So one of the requests that we got was a need for a peer review. We had peer review conducted over the late, the second half of last year. That peer review generated comments. They are in the packet and in the responses to, to this, to the final EIR. Actually, the peer review did not find, they recognized that there were gaps and we recognized that also in, in information. And they actually helped us develop a better, I guess, contingency and monitoring plan for it. So we, we got a little bit of help on that, but the basis for the project had not changed as a result of the peer review effort. Groundwater connections between neighboring basins. This, this comment is, the thought is that this area, the northeast area of, of the Pleasant Valley Basin, has a certain connection between the neighboring basins like the Los Poses area and that there is a little bit of groundwater trading going back and forth between the basins. But because we, we actually assumed that we were going to, we're isolated, we actually have taken a more conservative approach and did not count that interaction as part of this analysis. And the need for mitigation and monitoring over the life of the project, that is a proposal. It is included in your, as part of the mitigation and monitoring plan. There is a contingency section in the document, in your EIR, that actually identifies triggers, monitoring levels, water quality, and does have certain measures that need to be taken for how groundwater levels are, are just basically monitored, how neighboring wells are, may be impacted and how those are mitigated. And subsidence is another one and water quality. So now, that concludes all of the, the comments and responses on the mitigation and monitoring plan that is in your packet also. And it involves, on the construction related, we've got cultural resources that we're going to be monitoring for, hazardous materials for handling and shipping to the construction site, noise, and making sure that neighbors are not significantly impacted as a result of the construction noise, transportation, and water resources as it relates to possible groundwater dewatering and stormwater quality during construction, flooding as a result of some of the construction that, that could divert some of the, the water temporarily until the, the construction period is over. During operations or during the life of the project, there is, like I said before, groundwater conditions are going to get monitored and reported to, to the appropriate regulatory agencies. Subsidance is another one. And then noise is on initial operations for the first six months of, of the project just to make sure that the noise attenuation measures that we have in place within the treatment plant are, are being adhered to. And so what, what is the proposed project? The proposed project is a treatment facility located, and let me see here, does this one have, okay, right here, in next, near Antonio. It's a four and a half acre, I'm sorry, a four acre site, four acre site, area. And that is where the treatment plant would be located. We've got new wells near Antonio and Los Poses, and another well in the middle of an ag field behind, behind the school. And then there are pipelines, as you can see in blue, that are for distribution and the brine line connection, which is in black. And then the red area is also one for raw and product water distribution. So those are, that is what is going to be built as part of this proposed project.
Question?
Just one. Oh, go ahead, Bill.
Is that proposed location in the city or is it in the unincorporated area?
It's in the unincorporated area, so we would, we would, but it is, I think, the Antonio side is adjacent to the city. So we would be able, we would be able to.
Annex.
Annex it pretty easily.
And it wouldn't leave a less than 40 acre parcel?
I believe we.
Because that's critical of the county.
Yeah. I think we, I think it's borderline, but there is a clause of waiver that we can actually get that through the county.
Question, Bill?
Yes.
Lucy, that, is the desalter really built on that four acre parcel?
Yes.
Is that correct? Along with the treatment plant?
Yes.
Mike, just curiosity, because we got asked questions sometime. There was a section right over here where Upland crosses over, you know, Pleasant, Los Poses turned to Upland. And that, one of those spots that you guys looked at right there in the, in the groves?
Right.
No, down here.
Right here.
Right there.
Right there, yeah, that's it. What was reason for that one not being good?
I'll step in, because we would have to cross under the railroad tracks and our experience, from what we learned that Cuyahoga went through to bore under the railroad tracks, we probably will delay the project two years by considering that site.
Don't we service people here on the other side on Flynn Road?
That's Cuyahoga.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah.
We serve, a part of that is ours over there, right?
The seminary is.
We, we would need to, we would need to connect new pipes from the treatment facility to our wells. The treatment facility would be on the east side of the railroad tracks, the wells are on the west side of the railroad tracks, and we would need a new water pipe connection underneath, which we would have to get that permit from the railroad in order to be able to bore under the railroad tracks, and that's what would delay the project.
It looks like it'd be a whole lot more pipe, too.
Are we going to service one pipe on the, on the east side?
No, there's, there's at least, there's raw water pipes.
Right.
There's production, there's blending pipe water, and then there is brine line pipes. So there's at least three sets of water quality pipes that, that need to get connected to our existing infrastructure, which is located on the other side of, which is west of Cuyahoga Creek.
Right. We service that area. I'm just asking how you got the water over there, that's all.
Yeah, the only thing we have east of Cuyahoga Creek is a reservoir and with a pipe that actually delivers, actually, that one pipe has to get over across to, to, on the west side to deliver water to our customers.
Okay.
And there's a proposed mitigation plan. So with that, I did mention that, that there is a red folder item in your packet with comments. And we believe that that, that, that comment that we received this afternoon did not generate additional information. I believe we addressed all of the concerns that, that were in that letter. And I'm not sure, Mr. Fox, whether I needed to address something else. But that concludes my presentation.
Just one more point I'll add. Very thorough presentation, we covered all of the, I think, the points, Lucy covered them all very well, on the specific project that we've worked on a long time to develop the EIR, that went through a noticing period. And the benefit of that noticing period was to draw out the comments to see if we had missed something. And the good news is, after however many years we've been at this, I think we've hit at all the issues and have properly addressed them. The point I want to make though is that while we do recommend that you move forward with the action tonight to certify the document, we have had some discussions about pursuing a partnership where we could look at a different type of project that might even be bigger and, and provide further benefit to the area. That project will take a few months to work the details out to see if that makes sense. And if so, we would then be back at some point with an addendum to this EIR, because the expectations are it would be very similar to this in scope, but possibly some nuances. And we would just want to document those nuances if we choose to, you know, move in that direction. However, we felt it was favorable to approve the project tonight so that, one, as we return to the Groundwater Management Agency in the next couple of months, that's one item they were asking for, is have we, you know, have you had a chance to review the environmental issues? And now you have. Also, we don't lose any time if we do choose to do an addendum later. Again, this was a good process, we were already in the public noticing process, so why stop? And it did allow us, again, to make sure that if there are any issues out there, that we would identify those if we had not, if we had missed something, and this tells us that we have. So again, it would make sense to, unless you have some concerns that we haven't addressed, to, again, go with the recommendation to certify the EIR. I just did want to point out, we could be back at some point in the future with a minor adjustment to it.
Yes, go ahead. Your report on subsidence was good, because I wondered about that myself, and so that kind of gave me an idea. We're okay.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions and I've got some comments, and it's kind of hard to separate some of them. But one of the things in the letter that arrived today from Fox Canyon GMA, they spend almost a page talking about how they had thought we might partner, we had talked about maybe partnering with somebody else. And so we shouldn't, we should delay approving this because of the ownership. It was my impression that EIRs don't really deal with ownership, they deal with the environmental and maybe social issues, or whatever is specified by state law. So let me just ask, their point about ownership, is that something that needs to be considered? Or, or that would delay this, not having an amendment for a nuance and change in the plan, but the ownership?
Well, I think you, first of all, are correct. My experience has always been that the, you know, that that is not an issue that the EIR addresses, but I can refer this to, there's two experts that may, from, I would call it then a more legal perspective, either our city attorney or the consultant who prepared the document, might have some input on whether that's an issue that would normally be addressed in an EIR. Perhaps the city attorney, I'm not sure if he would have an answer. If not, we can defer to the consultant.
Well, it's my belief, and I haven't researched the issue, but it would seem to me that I think Councilmember Craven's understanding of what an EIR is, is the same as mine, which is, is to evaluate the environmental impacts, which is why it's called an environmental impact report, coincidentally. And I don't believe that the issue of ownership is going to make a difference on the environmental impacts. If it did, then they might need to be evaluated, but based on what I'm hearing, and my understanding is that the ownership issue is not going to change the environmental impacts.
It's not, in fact, doesn't, EIRs don't even get into public financing of a project as, or private financing of a project.
That's my understanding as well.
Yeah.
I'd like to know what staff member, what staff people gave that to you?
What staff? It was sent to me by the city clerk and sent to her by the Fox Canyon GMA.
It's a red.
It's a red folder item. I mean.
I think, Your Honor, rather than get into, starting to, you know, get deep into the analysis of the intent or who sent the comments, the important point to take from it is that we have reviewed the comments in the letter, and it does not bring up any new information that we failed to study in the EIR. Those are actually comments, many of the issues identified years ago when the notice of preparation first occurred, were discussed and concluded with mitigation and evaluate, mitigation monitoring plan when the EIR draft was first completed a year ago before we had the peer review. And the comments have come up again and are the same. So there really isn't, so bottom line, there isn't any new information that has come to your attention that needs to be further evaluated, and that's the important point to take away from our analysis of that letter.
May I continue?
Sure.
And that is a letter that's dated June 10th. We also received comments from Fox Canyon, May 14th, 2014, and April 20, 2015. And I'm mentioning this only because I find this very difficult as the city representative on the Fox Canyon Board, to have our staff send these comments. But one of the comments that was sent in the previous letter, one of the previous letters, it says the GMA was not allowed to review the 2015. So obviously, this is the April 2015 letter that said this. The 2015 groundwater modeling report, separate from the recirculated draft EIR, and it has concerns about the validity of the modeling. And I just want to get out there, I'm bothered by that statement. So if anybody's watching from GMA, just understand I'm bothered by that statement.
Make some noise.
I think that you.
Can we have a comment as to why that was, if in fact, that's a true statement? Why it wasn't shared? Is there any reason for that?
Your Honor, again, I guess I've heard it said before, experts are allowed to disagree. We have a modeler who prepared a model. We had another modeler do a peer review of that internally, just to make sure it made sense, and they agreed with it. For whatever reason, the Groundwater Management Agency has staff that felt differently. So a year ago, the way we felt was a reasonable approach to address the concern is to hire a peer review consultant to review the work that had been completed. And if they identified a problem, we'd, we'd fix it, we'd adjust it. We actually asked the GMA staff for a recommendation on who we should use as the peer review consultant. We wanted to pick somebody they were comfortable with, that they would trust their conclusion. And we did that. And the peer review consultant identified that the analysis a year ago was on target and was, was reasonable. And so therefore, we wrapped up the, you know, once we had that peer review concluded, we wrapped up the EIR based on those conclusions. And while the GMA staff still disputes all the analysis, we feel enough people have looked at this independently that, that we have a solid analysis to present. And therefore, there aren't any gaps or problems that we can bring up tonight that we feel haven't been addressed.
And, okay. I just have one other comment, and this is on, some things, it's on big page eight. And it's under the Ventura County Resource Management. And it's under the Ventura County Resource Management Agency Planning Division comments. And the third comment down says, consistently with, consistency with the county's wetlands policy should be addressed for alternative site seven. And the response that we made was, this site is not located in the county and not subject to county policies. That is not a correct statement. Any site we looked at is located in the county. It is not located in the unincorporated part of the county. I think that should be the proper response.
Thank you for.
So noted, and we will make that change.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions here? Yes, Jan.
I do. When you, we were talking about this letter again. Do you have any comments to the first part of it, where they talk about requesting meetings and working with them and not working with them?
Yeah, I have some comments. I'm not going to share them.
Okay. So I'm taking that to mean that you've done what they requested, you had the peer review,
you did all of this, and.
Correct.
And you feel like you've met their requirement.
Actually, according to these papers, it was LAFCO who requested the peer review.
Oh.
If you go back to big page three.
I did read that, but I thought Mr. Fox just said that he had done what the county or that Fox Canyon had asked for. I guess the thing that I want to make sure I understand is, is we, this document obviously was started and finished before we had any thoughts of changing the scope of the project slightly. So we, if we certify this, this is in place, we will, and even if we were to change the location, it would simply take a addendum. We wouldn't have to go back to the beginning or.
Well, let me clarify, it depends on how much the project description would change. And I can tell you that, as an example, not that this would happen, but if we went and selected a site up in Somus, that would be such a significant change in location, then you may have to recirculate the EIR because the conclusions could change fairly significantly. However, the type of adjustment we're talking about, you know, if we enter into a partnership is minor enough, we're going to be in generally the same area. The issues are the same, the conclusions would be the same, and the mitigation would be the same. So that because that's minor enough in nature, it doesn't change any of the results, then that would just be an addendum or, you know, an update basically describing the minor changes, and that wouldn't have to be recirculated. So it really depends on this, the amount of change to the scope before we would have to determine the level of review and adjustment or a public process that would be followed. The reason we felt also it'd be appropriate to certify it tonight is we think we have a good idea in looking at a partnership. Things can change, and if for some reason that doesn't occur, then at least we have this document, we can continue on with the project. But we would expect that through the partnership, we'll learn what is the best project, and then, once we have that, then we can go forward with an amendment that would be fairly quick. And we don't really lose any time. We actually probably gain time by doing that because we aren't starting the process. The, you know, if we don't certify tonight, for example, we would have to start the public review process all over again at some future time that we would have a new project description.
Which was my next question. So then, from the timing standpoint, we need to do that now to fit into the timing of this EIR?
In essence, if you don't certify it tonight, we lose all the public time that we can, should be able to take credit for.
Thank you. Just one more point that I think needs to be made. At that GMA meeting in May, they said, don't come back unless it's, you have a certified EIR. Now, they said a different thing in this letter that arrived today, but that's what they told us at that meeting.
That's right. I was just going to bring that up, that they made it very clear that one of the failures that we had, one of the reasons they didn't take action was because we had not certified the EIR.
So what are we doing?
Okay, is there any other comments?
It seems to be that kind of night.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I think that's a very thorough report that we had, and we've given some really deep thought and really great questions on that. So with that, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt a resolution certifying the EIR along with the mitigation monitoring plan.
Second.
Move to the second. Is there any discussion? Any further comments?
I'd like to say that I thought Lucy made an excellent presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Hearing none, please vote. Motion carries five to nothing. Motion carried. Well, is there anything else to come before this council?
Yes.
Comments.
Comments.
Oh, com, sorry, let's return to comments. I thought everyone had forgotten about that.
Closed session.
We have to say something.
We have a closed session?
We have one more closed session.
We do?
On the hotel conference project.
Oh, okay, okay. Let's, do we, do we have the comments first and then the?
Yeah, definitely. Comments first.
Okay. All right. City manager, any comments?
Just one quick comment. I attended the League of California Cities Channel Division Quarterly Meeting last week, and the topic was water, of course, and marijuana. And there was a lobbyist, two lobbyists on each of the items on that. It was pretty interesting.
Where was it, Hill?
It was in Pismo, Pismo Beach. It's a good meeting. That's it.
Did we get booed up there?
Pardon me?
Did we get booed up there?
No, because I was there. I said on behalf of.
Jim Monahan said we got booed, and I thought, what?
No, no. They usually say the entire city council of X city is here. I said the entire city council of Camarillo is not here, and they left. So that's all I cared about. But on your behalf, we said hello.
Thank you.
Hey, city attorney?
No comments.
Okay, let's start. Jan, you want to go first this time?
I will, and I'll do very quick. Just reporting on meetings, we had a policy committee meeting. The discussion was banners, and I believe we have one more meeting before that, our recommendation will come back to you. And we had a legislative committee meeting, looked at the last group of bills, and again, our recommendations will be coming to you. And I've already got enough requests on the list, so that's it tonight.
Thank you. Mike?
I'm not going to talk about the policy committee. She reported that. We'll be coming back with a report. APCD meeting, we dealt mainly with the, with the projected budget. We made it official, but it will be, come back next meeting with final approval. Rancho's Foundation brunch was very good. They, it, we feel, kind of filled the place there, didn't we, Bill? Budget session, we've already had that midterm budget. The open house at the Greek Orthodox Church, that's a different kind of looking building inside. It's nice. And that's just the, that's not their main building. That'll be built later. They had an open, they had a dinner where we made a presentation, Kevin and I did, at the dinner for the Greek Orthodox Church. Ribbon cutting, Johnson Dental, nice ribbon cutting out there. I attended the fire academy graduation. We all were invited. And that was a long, Bill, you stood a long time once, remember? Well, this was a long one, too, but it was, it was really nice to see these guys and what they went through. They showed films of the, all the stuff they had to go through in training, 18 months of it. Let's see. Oh, we had a successful, where's Madeline? We had a successful shred, paper shred day. And I was there when like, I only had one guy in front of me, but Jeffrey said that they were all there in the morning in line, and then just went away kind of thing. So I think, I believe what she does, we should have two of those a year instead of just one. Educators Hall of Fame, I attended that on behalf of the council. And we had three people from Camarillo, teacher, former teachers who got awards, and they were really good, including Bruce Colwell. You know who Bruce Colwell is. All spoke, and they spoke well, and we've got a good Hall of Fame for, you know, ex-educators. That's it.
All right. Charlotte?
I attended, since I wasn't at the last meeting, I need to report on the Contract Cities Conference. I attended May 14 through 16. And I also attended a legislative committee meeting on June 8th with Jan. I have, I don't know, I've been getting a lot of questions, and one of these, maybe Tom can answer. I had two people approach me while I was riding my bike, my exercise bike at the YMCA this week, wanting to know about, or telling me first that they really have enjoyed the bike path along the creek, and wanting to know if the part of the wall that is not finished is going to be finished, or if that's it. There's apparently a part of a wall.
Along the creek.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Along the creek where it ends, and it looks like it might be finished at some point.
Yeah, they're referring to a fence, actually. The trail has a, similar to the trail that has been in existence north of the freeway, the trail south of freeway will also have a white fence that will be continuous. However, this is our, you know, our environmental process at work. While the construction was occurring, we at least fortunately completed the path, but then a hawk nested near the path. And so we were not allowed to put the fence within 300 feet of the nest until after the nesting season.
Was that over?
So there's a 600-foot gap in the fence right now, waiting for the hawk to leave.
Well, I will have an answer for these people tomorrow morning.
My gosh, that's interesting.
Thank you. Another thing is, while I was gone, there was apparently an article in the newspaper where I was quoted regarding the landscape ordinance and people who have had letters from the city regarding their lack of having submitted plans or made an application for the change, or however we say it. And I was, and I've had a lot of calls since then. And my quote in the paper was, I didn't think we did a very good job of letting people know we'd made these changes and that they were now expected to submit the request approval of their plans, or I don't know exactly what it is they're requesting. What is it? Tell me, help me.
We require a zoning clearance.
Zoning clearance.
There's no fee.
Right, there's no fee, but they have to request a zoning clearance and submit their plans, too.
Correct, yes.
Yeah. And so I've had, because I was quoted saying, I didn't think we did a very good job of advertising that particular part of it, I had gotten a lot of calls while I was gone, and I've talked to a lot of people. Having read over this particular ordinance since I got back to refresh what we did, I'm kind of wondering if maybe we need to look at this again. I'm not sure how we came up with the, not more than 40% of your front yard can be artificial turf, and 60% has to be in live plantings and that kind of thing. And I was just wondering if we could look at this again with respect to those, those types of things.
You got the same thing I have on my comments. I've had.
Okay.
Calls like that, particularly about the 40%.
The 40% is.
They don't, they don't seem to mind the plans, although some question that, but they just wonder why, why we're only saying you could have 40% of.
And I don't remember our reasoning on it. It's, only was a year ago, I should remember it. But anyway, I would like to relook at some of that.
I would, too.
I could do that.
I heard three. Okay, didn't say when, but we, I'd like to do that. Another thing is, I had a discussion with a man, well, with two men, a man and his son, who, when they first asked me to talk to them, I thought, well, there's no way I can help them. And I'm not sure there is a way we can help them, but the more they talked, the more it seemed that maybe we should look at this. Many, many years ago, we adopted our granny flat ordinance. And it was maybe in the early 90s, late 80s sometime.
Early 90s.
It was, yeah, it was, it was in that time. And since then, we have amended it once, I believe. Our granny flat ordinance is very, very specific, saying that it, in a single-family residence, it's, the granny flat can be no more than 700 square feet, but there are two other instances in which it's 600 square feet. One is in a planned unit development, and one is in something else. And the two, the distinction doesn't matter. What these people told me is that the, and I can remember, I can't remember what we discussed a year ago about landscapes, but I can remember very clearly our discussions about the granny flats. And that, it was, we were thinking in terms of all of our lots being similar to where I live and where a lot of us live, the, you know, 100, 120 feet wide, or 100 feet wide and 120 feet deep. And you certainly don't want anything more than that there. These particular people were talking about Bella Vista, and they pointed out that there was a 1,800-foot addition for something and a 2,000-foot other structure for something else built up there, both of which we made them promise they wouldn't have residents living in those. But the point is, the lots were big enough for larger, larger units. So what they were asked, they said that many places, including the county of Ventura, have not a specific side, but a sliding scale. So if a lot is so big, it's so, you can have so many square feet, if it's larger, it can go on up to 1,200 square feet. And they were asking if we would look at that again and make a decision. And I said, I had no idea what the city council would decide, that I could never support having anything larger than 700 square feet in our, most of our single-family residential areas with the lots that we were thinking of when, when we adopted this. But I said, I would ask if you would like to consider looking at it and seeing what other cities in Ventura County have about that, and leave it up to you.
The idea at the time was that we didn't want, basically, having small apartments built.
Overcrowding.
Exactly. You got it.
So I don't know that, my thought, you know, I was, should, I'm not sure that I would agree that we should.
Relook at it.
I don't know, to me, it, I mean, it's for, you know, a granny flat's, a granny flat, to me, it's for one person to live there, no more than two, if you want.
Well, you can, a lot of them have a granny and a grandpa.
Yeah, I understand that, but I don't want to get into a situation where, you know, we're going to have to have code going out there and seeing the families and whatnot and be living in them. Now, obviously, if you've got enough room, we can certainly look at, but I wouldn't want to expand it too much more than what it is now, myself.
Well, just to clarify, once granny dies, our, our code does allow other people, and they have to register once a year with our community development department, who is living in there. And it can only be while the property owner is the resident of the primary unit. We have those restrictions.
I suppose it wouldn't be a bad thing to see what other cities are doing with that. I mean, just to see, it's been a long time.
You mentioned that they said some had 1,800 square feet in the back, second one?
One is a rec room and one is a pool house. An 1,800-foot pool house and a 2,000-square-foot rec room.
Residential units, they're, they're things that support the pool and things like that.
Yeah, and the reason they told me that was to say that the lots were large enough to support it and something else.
You were talking about a second granny flat. You're like building a residence for somebody.
Well, they weren't talking that big.
Well, it's.
Yeah. No, I'm not arguing, I'm just.
It's one thing to build a pool house, but it's another thing to build.
Granny flat.
A kitchen, a bath.
Right.
Bedrooms and everything else. I just.
I don't know if we're looking at it, because I think that something like this, it's fresh to look at anyway, it's been a long, long time.
It has been.
It hasn't even been looked at. Whether we change it or not, I don't know, but I think it's worth looking at. And if you're dealing with properties that have.
I'm sorry. You're dealing with larger lots, you know, some of those, the ones you're talking about, they could have almost an acre of land. And I think that's what the sliding scale is, that it could.
Yes.
Be so big in relationship to the parcel that you have.
Right.
I just wouldn't want it to be too much bigger than what we have now.
Yeah. There's one in town that we had on a tour. It's probably one of the biggest houses in town. It's off of Crestview, and you go back there and all that land, you don't see it, all that land and that one house is there. They have a pool, they have a pool house and a pool hall in there, in that one little building, where the pool, the machine is, plus the dressing rooms, and then they have a game room, all together. And that may, that's probably more than 700 square feet, but no one lives there. I've seen that, but that's a huge piece of property.
I think that's the key to it, is if you've got a. I think that's the key to it, is if you've got a large enough piece of property and granny needs a little more room to move around, it's different than having a pool house because you're still having that, that structure on the property, but I think it's having the space. It's the key to it all.
Right.
I have no problem looking at it.
Well, I don't know whether we're having problems with the existing granny flats being converted to rental apartments.
Yeah.
We can't stop it.
Do you, does staff have any comment?
Well, I need to remind the council that this is not on the agenda, and simply if you want us to look at it, we can go ahead and look at it. And that's really the decision that needs to be made tonight.
Okay. All right. Do you want to, you want to?
Well, I'd ask, so. I haven't heard three.
Let the staff work it into their schedules.
Yeah. It's not a rush. I told these people, we don't act fast on these things, and they may not even get a no for a long time.
Anything else, Charlotte?
That's all I have.
Kevin?
Just a couple of meetings. Verestia and I did attend St. Demetrius Orthodox Church Dinner up at Padre Sarah Parish. It has been really good to that church. So it's nice to see another church in the Mission Oaks area. That's a really good thing. Really good people. And that's all I have.
Okay. I didn't, didn't have too many things this past couple of weeks. Had an Economic Development Committee. Nothing really happened there. Attended a Camarillo Ranch Board meeting last Wednesday night. The one thing I think that was the highlight was I attended the groundbreaking for the Somas-Donlan Road interchange or redesigned intersection that will hopefully remove the longest-running traffic backup at, in the county. And they're.
Been a long time, hasn't it?
They've really, the county is, is funding it 100% themselves, and they're using a, they're really, kind of got a lot of interesting things. They've got a portable bridge, the concrete bridge they're bringing in, in sections and putting it right on the, right together on site to, it'll save about six months to eight months in building a bridge from scratch. They'll build the abutments on site, and then they'll bring this bridge in. It's about a, about an 80-foot bridge, so it's not small.
You know, they had this plan before, a long time ago. They just dropped it.
Yeah.
They were going to do it and just let it go.
Well, it was part of the, there was attempt by Caltrans to redo the whole 118 at one point in time, and this got all messed up with it. And so now it's just, it's just re-aligning the intersection at Somas and Donlan. And hopefully, we'll do a, a good job. They'll be able to at least coordinate the traffic signals so they operate, they apparently operate off-cycle. One side, when one side's going, the other side doesn't go at all and so forth. So this will keep them, kind of restore it to a normal intersection. So we'll see. It was, had a nice turnout. Okay. Anything else we need to talk about? We have some, want to.
Did you want me to restate the?
I don't think you did the first time.
Do you have your, I put my agenda away. Do you have yours? Well, this was from the, the adjourned one? Yeah. Hi. Yes, this would be the conference with real property negotiator. Is that the only one that we have left, Mr. Fang, tonight? Okay. The authorities, Government Code Section 54956.8. The property is the Hotel Conference Center. The negotiators and negotiating parties are in the agenda under negotiation or the price and terms of payment.
Okay. There's nothing else? We'll stand, reset.